Yeah.
So, we're not in here for your work. We're trying to get the climate. We should.
Yes, I'm. I thought we took that one away. That happened to Ben. That was the one that Ben.
We have, it just keep breaking. The demos just picked me up. It was supposed to arrive this week. Just really good.
It's nine thirty. Call the meeting to order. First item of business is adoption of the agenda. Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden. Moved through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Peterson. That agenda be approved with the following amendments. That council conclude the correspondence from Mayor Brian Petrie to the town of Angersville regarding development charges and that item fifteen point three and fifteen point four be separated from the other items under section fifteen of the agenda.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And are there any? Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Councilor Petrie. Deputy Warden Petries.
Sorry, Warden. I have another motion to part of the agenda.
Apologies.
To give Councilor Martin. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Tate. Resolve that the motion to adjourn the council meeting of February twenty six, twenty twenty five, be extended at two thirty P M.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried.
Do I want to reread that?
The disclosures? Yeah, I'm gonna. Having adopted the agenda, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Councilor Martin.
Yes. I don't have the numbers in front of me. Thank you. I have disclosure of pecuniary interest for application for official plan amendment, OP twenty four dash twelve dash eight for seven four seven Pavey Street, Inc. And there are a number of times this comes up on the agenda, including the bylaw. So I'll declare conflict on each area.
Do you have that in writing for the clerk?
I do.
For each area that?
It's been pre-submitted.
In writing? Thank you. Are there any other disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Not seeing any others. Adoption of the council minutes of the previous meeting. Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden. Through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Mayberry. Resolve that the council minutes of February twelve, twenty twenty five be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And public meetings, resolution to go into a public meeting pursuant to the Planning Act. Councilor Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Palmer. Resolve that council rise and go into a public meeting pursuant to the Planning Act and that Warden chair the public meeting.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And I will turn it over to Director Michaels for five point one point one.
Thank you, Warden. The application before council is an official plan amendment that's proposing to re-design lands in the south part of Woodstock from low-density residential to medium-density residential to allow for a thirty-two unit stacked townhouse development. The lands are located on the west side of Norwich Ave between Parkinson and Slater Ave, and they are in proximity to transit, open space uses, and commercial services across the road to the east. Surrounding uses consist of low-density residential with the large regional shopping area to the east, and more specifically, directly across from the property is the No Frills Plaza. The proposed development will be a three-story in height stacked townhouse development. It's located along the edge with Norwich Ave with parking and landscaping in the rear into the south. And the intent of this is to provide for more gradual transition from this, what will be a three-story building, to the low-density uses to the east and, or to the west and to the south. The proposed access for the development will align with the existing signalized intersection on Norwich Ave to help address traffic issues coming from the development, and five existing driveways will be eliminated in favor of that one shared driveway. The associated zoning bylaw amendment is proposing an R three zone for the subject property, again, to recognize the proposed stacked townhouse use, and it would also limit the height and number of units to the thirty-two proposed. Site plan approval will also be required for the property to address site-related issues, such as drainage and stormwater management. And that will also be used to address many of the issues that were expressed by neighboring homes and folks in the surrounding area related to stormwater management, garbage pests, grading drainage. So those are all things that can be addressed through site plan control. City council supported this application at their January sixteenth meeting and recommended support of the O P A in principle for the zoning bylaw. So in summary, we're of the opinion that the applications can be supported and are recommending approval of the attached official plan amendment.
Thank you. Questions from council on the report? Not seeing any. Is the applicant here and do they wish to speak their application? Would you like to speak your application?
Answer questions if there are any.
Well, in order to answer questions, you gotta come up, but it's up to you. It's your call. Yeah. And when you're done, you can just sign in. There's a sign-in sheet over there at the media desk. Do you want to speak, or do you want me to just ask them for questions?
Questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Not seeing any. Are there any members of the public, either here in person or virtually, who wish to speak to the application? Not seeing any, then we'll move on. Excuse me, to five point one point two. Director Michaels.
Thank you again, Warden. This application before council, again, is an official plan amendment, but this particular amendment proposes special policies that would allow for the severance of the only farm dwelling from an agricultural lot as a part of a farm consolidation. And we say farm consolidation, we mean the legal merger of two farm parcels to create one. The lands are located on the south side of Oxford Road twenty-nine, just east of the village of Innerkip, but are in the township of Blanford Blenheim. Surrounding land uses consist primarily of agricultural uses. This proposal would serve to basically have a landlocked parcel, which is the one shown in green there on that plate, merge with another farm parcel, which is the parcel shown in red, create one larger farm parcel that will have access off of Oxford Road twenty-nine. And then as part of that, the rural residential lot, which is the area shown in blue on that plate, would be removed from the property and would contain the existing dwelling that's on the farm now, the only dwelling, as well as some accessory buildings. And there is a barn as well, but it straddles the lot line, so that would be removed as part of this proposal. As well, I would note that just to the south of that green shaded landlocked parcel is a C P rail main line, and I'll get to that in a second, but that is part of the reason why we're able to support the proposal in this case. So normally, the official plan does not allow for the severance of the only dwelling as part of a farm consolidation. However, in this case, staffer of the opinion that this exception can be considered, and there's a number of reasons for that, it will both facilitate the creation of a larger, more viable farm parcel, eliminate some of the fragmentation now between the natural heritage parcels, or areas that are on both parcels. So by consolidating those two farm parcels, it'll also consolidate those natural heritage areas. But as well, and more importantly, it would eliminate the landlocked parcel shown in green and the need for farm equipment to cross that C P rail main line. So right now, access to that green parcel is from the property to the south. It's owned by the same owner, and equipment's required to traverse that C P rail line to get to the landlocked parcel, to till the lands on that parcel. So removing that, what could be an unsafe access and is only kind of an informal access, is part of the rationale for why we're supporting this proposal. So to support this exception, I'd also note that the enlarged farm parcel, so again, the green and the red merged as one, will be rezoned to prohibit the construction of a dwelling in the future. So that'll ensure that it is continuing to be used for long-term agricultural purposes and is not just a new building lot. Blanford Blenheim council did recommend support of the zoning bylaw and the O P A at their February meeting. So with that in mind, we are recommending approval of the official plan amendment in this particular case, and we do not believe it will create an undesirable precedent.
Thank you. Questions from council on the report? Councilor Gilvasey.
Thank you. Through you, Warden. The diagram that shows the house, like the overview photo, it looks like the lot line's going right through the barn, right through the middle of the barn. Am I correct? Am I, like, seeing that? And how does that work?
Yeah. So, through the Warden. Yes, the barn is the one building that will be removed as a condition of consent. So yeah, we recognize it straddles the lot line, so that will be a condition of approval.
Any other questions on the report?
One from me. So if I understand this correctly, then, Director, that essentially, as a result of the conditions placed on this, there would, it would not be possible for there to be net new homes on all of the properties?
Yeah. In response to that question, yeah, on the property that's created. So the enlarged property, which will be that landlocked parcel merged with the parcel, yeah, with frontage on twenty-nine. Yeah.
Any other questions on the report? Is the applicant here and do they wish to speak to their application?
We are available for questions yet.
Any questions from council? For the applicant? Okay. Are there any members of the public, either here in person or attending virtually, who wish to speak to the application? All right. Director Michaels, item five point one point three.
Okay. Wrong one. Sorry, just give me a second here. Okay. Okay, perfect. Again, this is another official plan amendment application. This one is to re-designate lands in the south part of the city of Woodstock from low-density residential to medium-density residential. In this case, it's to facilitate a fifty-two unit apartment development on the subject property. I just would note on this one that the report to city council proposed this development as a high-density residential development, but after further review by planning staff, it was determined that medium density is actually the more appropriate designation for this particular site. Won't change in any way the nature of the proposal, simply the way it's recognized in the official plan, so I just wanted to point that out before proceeding. This property is located on the north side of Pavey Street between Norwich Ave and Fife Ave in proximity to parks, schools, and other community services, so meets the criteria in that respect for intensification and medium-density development. Surrounding uses consist of low-density residential to the east and west, institutional use, long-term care to the north, and existing apartments across the road to the south, a two-story apartment complex. But the broader area is characterized by more of a mix of uses and dwelling types. This plate shows the actual layout of the proposed development, which will consist of two apartment buildings to contain the overall fifty-two units with surface parking and amenity areas. The site will have access to both Pavey Street and Fifth Ave. And the site design is such that the buildings will be oriented and located to minimize impacts on abutting low-density residential areas. The associated zoning bylaw amendment is proposing to rezone the lands to R three, again, to recognize this type of use and to limit both the height and number of units on the property. The proposal was also supported by various technical studies that will be addressed either through the design of the site or the site plan approval that's required for it. There were a few neighbors who expressed concerns with respect to issues such as privacy and views, density, grading, and drainage. The applicant did agree to increase some of the setbacks to address some of those concerns, as well as to install fencing along some of the shared property lines. As well, the site plan approval process can be used to address the grading and drainage issues. City council supported this application at their January sixteenth meeting, so we are also recommending supportive at county council and approval of the attached O P A.
Any questions on the report? Is the applicant here and do they wish to speak to their application?
Good morning, Warden Ryan. It's Caroline Baker from Baker Planning Group. Can you hear me all right?
You can.
Perfect. I'll just take a brief few moments. Just wanted to be here to answer any questions of county council, also to confirm support of planning staff's recommendation to approve the official plan amendment. Certainly, we appreciated the opportunity to be at the city Woodstock council and work with members of the community, particularly adjacent residential property owners, to ensure that the proposed building design was intentionally designed to provide separation space where there is low-density residential uses, and we look forward to working with staff if it's approved on a future site plan application. But certainly, any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Any questions from council for the applicant? Not seeing any. Thank you. Are there any members of the public, either here in person or attending virtually, who wish to speak to the application? Not seeing any. Item five point one point four. Director Michaels.
Okay. Thank you again, Warden. This application is for an official plan amendment and subdivision, which would facilitate the development of a large mixed-use plan of subdivision on a forty-five hectare former industrial site. The site was previously occupied by Maple Leaf Foods, which has ceased operation, and the property is now vacant. It is located in the village of Thamesford, just south of their village core, and is located between Middleton Street and the Thames River and just south of Brock Street. In terms of the development itself, this development will add over a thousand new homes to the village of Thamesford, as well as a number of commercial, institutional, and open space uses, more specifically, eighteen lots for single detached dwellings, eleven townhouse blocks, which would comprise as many as six hundred and forty townhouse units, and that'll be a mix of units, so it could be stacked townhouses, back-to-back townhouses, some single-story, two-story, the intent being that there'll be a mix of townhouse units throughout those blocks. There's also two apartment blocks, which are also medium density, but are for apartments specifically. Those would accommodate six-story apartment buildings, which are two stories above what's normally permitted in a village medium-density designation, and would allow for up to three hundred and seventy-five units. There's also two blocks for commercial uses and a block for institutional uses, and those will be a long extension of George Street, so again, just south of the village core and a natural extension to the village core. So if we look at those on this plate, they're kind of clustered in this area here, and that's George Street. Bit of a lag here. George Street is kind of that area there extending into the development. So to the upper portion of that street is the institutional block, and on the lower portion are the two commercial blocks. So the institutional block will accommodate a new elementary school and related facilities, and that school, our funding for that school has been confirmed. To the south of, or sorry, to the bottom of that St. George Street extension are the two commercial blocks, and the intent there is to accommodate a mix of uses that would further support the village, so those could include things like a grocery store, medical center, offices, restaurants, really kind of bolstering what's available currently within the village core of the township. And the other thing I would mention is, given that this is essentially going to double the population of the township at full buildout, having additional facilities to support these residents is a crucial part of the overall development. There's also a large open space trail block along the Thames River, so there'll be a dedication of a fair section of lands right along the Thames, which will also include a recreational trail that will be constructed in that location, so kind of complementing the existing park area that's on the opposite side of the Thames. This will kind of be the matching park on the closer side of the Thames to the village. Really, the site represents a unique opportunity for the township to both increase their density and range of units in proximity to their village core. These don't come up too often. But as well as that, it allows them to add additional village commercial space adjacent to the village core and this institutional use. So really, it's a complete community type of development for a village of this size. It's also probably the largest, both development and highest density, that we've seen, particularly in a serviced village. It's at sixty units, sixty-plus units per net hectare, so it is a high-density development. The official plan amendment that accompanies this would re-designate the lands to their appropriate uses, so from low-density to medium-density, and as I indicated, part of the medium density will be an exception to height for the apartment blocks, and it'll also allow for increased density beyond what would normally be permitted in a village medium-density designation. So that's written into the O P A. Similarly, the bylaw amendment that goes with it would recognize these same uses and set out the specific standards, such as lot frontage and coverage and those specifics related to the type of development. But because there is some flexibility on these blocks, the details of that zoning will be determined at a later date in consultation with township council. Various technical studies have been submitted in support of these applications, given their scale. There's been the whole range of studies, from planning justification reports to functional servicing to environmental impact studies, and all of those reports are addressed through either the design of the subdivision or the conditions of draft approval. Some questions were raised in relation to this development, but no concerns, to my knowledge, have been received, and Zora Township Council recommended support of the O P A in subdivision and approved the zoning in principle at their January fifteenth meeting. So with that said, we are recommending approval of both the subdivision and the official plan amendment, subject to the conditions contained in this report.
Thank you. Questions from council on the report? Is the applicant here and do they wish to speak to their application? Do you wish to speak to your application? Are there any members of the public, either here in person or attending virtually, who wish to speak to the application? Not seeing any. Resolution to adjourn the public meeting. Councilor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Gilvasey. Resolve that council adjourn the public meeting, reconvene as Oxford County Council with the Warden and the Chair.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And item five point three. Councilor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Gilvasey. Resolve that the recommendations contained in report C P twenty twenty-five dash four five, titled Application for Official Plan Amendment, OP two four dash oh four dash eight. John and Lisa Crocker be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And item five point four. Councilor Peterson.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by Peterson, seconded by Councilor Tate. Resolve that recommendation contained in report C P twenty twenty-five dash forty-six, titled Application for Official Plan Amendment, OP twenty-four dash nineteen dash one. OP twenty-four dash nineteen dash one. Evelyn Baker and John Mensick, Shelley and Eric Hoffer be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Item five point five, uh, Counselor Acioni.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Schaefer, resolve that the recommendations contained in report CP twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one, titled Application for Official Plan Amendment OP twenty-four dash twelve dash eight. Seven forty-seven Pavy Street, Inc. and Benji Investments Corporation, Inc. be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And five point six, Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Acioni, resolve the recommendations contained in report CP twenty twenty-five dash five four, titled Application for Official Plan Amendment OP twenty-two dash twenty-two dash five, and Plan of Subdivision SB twenty-two dash one-zero dash five. Riverside Commercial Limited be adopted.
Is there any discussion? Uh, I'm going to say a few words about it. I'm going to try, I'm going to do my best to be brief. Um, very supportive of this application. Uh, it's been a long time coming, although in an Ontario context, pretty quick considering how many homes and how large the property is for this to go from, uh, from an abandoned industrial site to being redeveloped. Um, I think that, in a lot of ways, um, this is the kind of development that we, that we need in Oxford. Infill, brownfield, um, mix of institutional and commercial, as, as the planning report makes clear, um, complete community, augmenting the community that exists there as already. Um, and I think we need to really pursue these kinds of, um, innovative developments. I, I also want to point out, um, I think something that's, that's unique about this application, both here today at county council and at Zora council meeting, there was nobody who spoke in opposition to this application. There were two members of the public who attended the Zora council meeting, uh, and they were parents of one of the council members. Um, they, they were there specifically for this application, but they wanted to hear what he had to say about the application. And I think, um, and I think that's really, uh, a testament to how, um, uh, county and township staff and also the applicant worked with the community to understand what was really needed in the community. Um, how was this going to address those needs, uh, mitigate any negativity that, that people had, uh, and as a result, uh, as the planning report makes clear, um, you know, nobody from the public to oppose it, nor here today, uh, and unanimously approved by Zora Township Council, and, and I am, uh, hoping unanimously approved by county council today. But this will be a dramatic, uh, development, uh, for the village of Thamesford in particular, for the township of Zora, but I would suggest as a model development for Oxford County as well, that, that these things can happen, these, these kind of, you know, large, outside-the-box, weird developments, delivering a school, delivering a school, right? I mean, I'm not going to belabor the irony of me being able to work with the school board and deliver a school for a community, right? But these things can be done, and this application really is the, the end of all that. So, um, if there's no other comments, I will call for Counselor Deputy Warden Petrie and then Counselor Acioni.
Certainly supportive of this. I think it's going to be an interesting case study on, uh, uh, no, I don't think we've had this size of development, uh, happen or, uh, application happen within such a, 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 a villager size in Oxford County before. Uh, it's certainly interesting to see the growth pressures that come from adding that many, uh, that much development to a small community, uh, but, uh, I think that's, uh, I think it can be accommodated. So, I have no problem supporting this, but again, I think it will be interesting to see what, uh, that, that brings, as it hasn't been done before, and so, uh, first out of the gate, you always have different things that happen, so it'd be interesting to keep a watch on that. Thank you.
Counselor Acioni.
Yeah, thank you, through you, Warden. Really, uh, a lot of echo, Deputy Warden Petrie, it's, um, it's, it's great to see. Actually, we all know that we need more homes. Looking at areas, the brownfield, uh, industrial sites is a great way to do this, and for the, I guess, the entire neighborhood, or the entire town in this case, of Thamesford to recognize that is, uh, hats off. You know, in a world of a lot of, um, NIMBYism, not in my backyard, to, to see an application like this, as dense it is, and pass through, I got to commend you, Warden, and, uh, your council and the developer, so congratulations, this looks like a nice site.
Counselor Gilvezzi.
Thank you. Um, I do actually have one question. How many years is this going to take to build out?
Well, I mean, that would most appropriately be a question for the developer, but, um, I mean, I, I would, I would imagine, uh, well, some of it's going to start very quickly, for instance. We, we know the school board is approved already, uh, by the ministry, um, and they, they plan on build, starting construction of the school on the school site in the fall, certainly by the end of the year. Um, I know, uh, from discussions with township staff and county staff, that, um, with respect to infrastructure and everything, the plans are to start as soon as everything can happen, which would be starting this year. But to build out a thousand units, including apartment buildings, I mean, you know, it's got to be, I, I got, I got, I mean, I, I hesitate to speak on behalf of the developer when they're sitting there, but, I mean, it's got to be a decade, I wouldn't be surprised if it was more than that. But I mean, as, as we all know, these things depend very much on interest rates, the market, inflation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but it's not going to be a year or two to put a thousand units on this property, that's for sure.
Um, and then I, I guess I just have one comment. Um, maybe I have a bit of a take, a different take on, on this, but, um, it's a very high-density project. We had a resolution a while ago that spoke about sustainability, and, um, like, I just don't feel that questions are answered, or we haven't got a report back yet. Um, this is a very large development, it's going to bring a lot of people to our community, and can the infrastructure really sustain the project? So, I guess maybe I have a, a bit of a different take. Um, I also think that we are severely changing the landscape in Oxford County, moving away from rural to more urbanized or metro, like, type small areas. Um, anyways, thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, in response, I would just say, uh, in the village of Thamesford, with respect to water and wastewater capacity, even when this is completely built out, there is still a, quite a significant excess of water and wastewater capacity, uh, even when this is built out. So, from an infrastructure standpoint, there's, uh, no, no issues there, I think the planning report makes that clear. But also, with respect to the, um, changes to the community, like, that, that is definitely a thing, like, that, the village of Thamesford will change significantly as a result of this. But again, you know, through extensive consultation with the public, um, nobody said, "We don't want this." People, people, quite, quite the opposite, said, "We, we want the school that this is going to bring, we want the commercial opportunities this is going to bring, we want the ver- variety of housing types this is going to bring, so that we don't, so that seniors don't have to leave the village, uh, when they want to downsize their housing, or so that kids can stay in their community when they want to move out, but they can't afford a, a million-dollar single-family home." So, the, the feedback from the community has been, uh, neutral to positive, uh, on the overall development, and with respect to infrastructure, um, you know, as the planning report makes clear, zero concerns about capacity for water and wastewater. Yes?
Thank you. Um, like, since your community supports it, I, I always respect that, so, like, I will support it, because there's so much support from your community. But, um, you know, one thing that's never brought into any of these planning applications is healthcare, and we already know that we've got so many residents in Oxford County without healthcare, and I don't know how we continue to keep absorbing more when we don't have any doctors. Thank you.
Yeah, so I would say that was part of the concern, um, when this, uh, project started, and, uh, that's why there is, uh, commercial spaces available, uh, required, uh, and now through this, uh, assuming council approves it here today, uh, in there, and, um, I'll, I'll, I'll go as far as to say this, uh, there is intentionally potential in the development and the plan of subdivision to add primary healthcare capacity, is as far as I will go. Anyone else? Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Warden Ryan. Um, I've had the, the pleasure of working on this file for quite a number of years, probably the person that got the first call back in two thousand and eighteen, when Maple Leaf decided to, uh, to shutter that plant. Um, and, and so I, I wholeheartedly and enthusiastically support this application, to have seen the journey, to see, uh, the community go from, uh, feeling quite anxious about, uh, the future of that, uh, this parcel of land, uh, to seeing it being turned into commercial housing, school, um, a, a vibrant community. Um, it has been a long journey, uh, and continues, uh, as these units get built, but, uh, whole-hearted support, uh, for this application, and, uh, appreciation to the developer for truly listening, uh, to the community throughout this process.
Anyone else? Sixty units per hectare. All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And delegations, presentations and consideration thereof, um, Woodstock Hospital and Oxford, Ontario Health Team is here. Um, so when you come up, there will be a timer on the screen for you. I believe the microphone is on already, um, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Don't worry about it. Good morning, everyone. My name is Alyssa Ward. I am the Oxford OHT Project Assistant, assigned to the Heart Hub project. I want to begin by thanking Marcus, Warden Marcus Ryan and the Oxford County Council for allowing us to speak on the Oxford Heart Hub today. Joining me is Jill, Jill Blair, Manager of Woodstock Hospital's Mental Health Outpatient Department, and Shelley Muldoon, Director of Mental Health and Addictions at Woodstock Hospital.
Thanks, Alyssa. So, Woodstock and Oxford County have critical gaps in services for individuals struggling with mental health, addictions, and homelessness. This is creating significant challenges for our community. Emergency department visits by individuals experiencing homelessness are rising. Shelters are at or near capacity, leaving people with nowhere to turn. Opioid-related hospital visits continue to increase, and mental health and housing services are stretched beyond their limits. Our region lacks key services like withdrawal management and residential addiction treatment. Instead, people are forced to wait to tr- or, forced to wait or travel outside of this region, barriers that only push them further into crisis. Disconnected services leave people cycling through emergency rooms, shelters, and the streets. With the steadfast, steadfast support from our local MPP, Ernie Hardiman, the Ministry of Health approved the Oxford Heart Hub, Heart Hub on January twenty-seventh. This announcement was a significant milestone in giving us the green light to begin building a system that meets people where they're at, removing barriers, and delivers real solutions.
The term "Heart Hub" is somewhat misleading, because the hub isn't just one organization or facility, it's a network of community partners, which you can see on this slide. Together, we will provide wraparound care and create a system where no one falls through the cracks. The Oxford model of care will ensure that there is seamless transitions between housing, healthcare, and social services, and a coordinated network of support that addresses both immediate needs and long-term stability. This is how we will empower individuals to recover and achieve long-term wellness.
The Oxford Heart Hub follows a four-step journey to ensure that nobody is left behind. Step one is the first point of contact. Whether someone walks through the door of one of our Heart Hub partners, or connects with our mobile outreach team, they will be met with warmth and dignity. We create a welcoming environment where people feel safe to ask for help. Step two will be safety and immediate needs. The first priority is stabilizing basic needs by providing essentials like a hot meal and shower, access to primary care, and emergency shelter. Step two is where I would like to pause and say we are grateful to city and county councils who are working together and using the Building Faster Fund to help address homelessness in Oxford County. Thank you very much. Step three is support and navigation. Once individuals are stabilized, they are connected to services tailored to their needs, such as housing intake and transitional support, mental health and addiction services, primary care for ongoing health needs, and case management for financial and social assistance. Step four is stability and recovery. The final stage focuses on long-term solutions, preventing the revolving door of crisis care. A critical component of this step will be the Oxford County Wellness Center. It will include approximately sixty dedicated mental health and addictions treatment beds. The Wellness Center will also enable some of our mental health and addiction service providers to co-locate under one roof, further strengthening an integrated care model.
Woodstock Hospital's Board of Trust and senior team made a strategic decision to purchase sixteen Graham Street for a Wellness Center. Here's why this location is critical. It is centrally located and close to public transportation, it's in close proximity to existing health, social, and human services, ensuring people get the right support at the right time. The existing infrastructure sites, uh, sorry, the existing infrastructure, various sites were carefully evaluated based on square footage, parking, and potential for expansion. Sixteen Graham Street met all these criteria. We understand that some, some community, some community members have concerns about the Wellness Center's proximity to schools. We want to make sure there's no confusion. The Wellness Center is not a supervised drug consumption site or a shelter, it's an active treatment and recovery facility that will be staffed twenty-four-seven by a team of dedicated healthcare professionals, including mental health nurses, social workers, peer-support workers, therapists, and psychiatrists. In addition, security monitoring will enable a safe and supportive environment for everyone. Without access to care, individuals in crisis have nowhere to turn, often remaining on the streets, in parks, and near businesses and schools. However, community safety improves when individuals have access to the right services and ongoing support to achieve long-term stability.
Mental health and addiction challenges impact people from all walks of life, our friends, neighbors, and loved ones, yet many suffer in silence. The Oxford Heart Hub reflects that what we, alongside our community partners, believe to be the most effective compassionate solution to support some of our most vulnerable community members. Thank you for your time and reflection today.
Thank you very much. Questions from council for the delegation? Counselor Acioni.
Thank you, through you, Warden. Uh, first off, thank you. OHT, Woodstock Hospital, led the way, you know, put such a great and amazing application together, I know how much work that went into that, um, and this was definitely a, a team Oxford approach with all the organizations. Uh, but what, without the two of you being the Woodstock Hospital, OHT, leading that charge, it never would have gotten this far. So, really, bottom of my heart, thank you. I think Oxford County is going to thank us one day in the near future, we're going to wonder how we didn't survive without it. The need's been huge, this is a true game changer for everybody that's in any type of, uh, need, be it mental health or addictions, uh, here in Oxford County. So, um, just from bottom of my heart, thank you. Apologize, there's not really a question there, just keep going. Actually, I will make a question. Sorry, make, I got, I got the eye. At what point do we think, um, realistically, would we open the doors for our first client? Is there any kind of timeframes done yet that can be shared?
So, we are, um, investigating a phased approach at this point. Uh, we're not entirely sure what that's going to look like, so we are in the planning phase at this time. We have several working groups which are, um, being created as we speak, with all of our community partners, and we will, at that point, be able to leverage and understand how we can do it and as quickly as we can.
Any other questions for the delegation? Counselor Gilvezzi.
Thank you, through you, Warden. Um, how many beds would be available in the facility?
There will be sixty beds. Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Um, Counselor Acioni.
Thank you. Through you, Warden, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Gilvezzi, resolve that the information provided in delegation six point one on the open meeting agenda, February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, be received.
Any discussion? Counselor Gilvezzi.
Um, I would just like to say congratulations on the success of the application, and, um, this is so needed in Oxford County, and I was literally thrilled when the announcement came through that we were getting this.
Anyone else? Counselor Peterson.
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate that as well, and, and, you know, the hard part about this whole thing is, and I know we've talked about other things, you know, safe injection, the whole nine yards, but if you, if, if you have a start and you don't have a finish, it really makes the other parts, uh, in-between really kind of relevant, so it's nice to have this whole process going forward, and I too was extremely excited to hear that it came on, so thank you.
Anyone else? The number of times that I have had conversations with residents, other counselors, MPPs, and ministers about how, you know, well, first of all, about how Oxford County spends fifty-four percent of the money on housing in Oxford County, and the provincial and federal government combined spend the other forty-six percent, and that's not good enough, but also that even if we spent more, it's not enough. That somebody who is, you know, clinically depressed and self-medicating with street drugs, us providing four walls and a roof is better than nothing, but it's not much better than nothing. There's a reason that person ended up homeless. At some point, they were housed, there's a reason they're not housed, and if we don't address those reasons, just providing the walls and the roof is not going to deal with it. So, I really think, and I've said this many times in the media, that we were sort of, you know, didn't have all the tools to do the job in Oxford. Um, and, and I've said as well in the media, I, I, if you had asked me a week before, I would have bet you a paycheck we were not getting this. I think it is a credit to the OHT and Woodstock Hospital. I think it is a credit to the O H T and Woodstock Hospital, and, and as Counselor Acioni said, to the partnership and advocacy of everybody involved to get this there, because without this, we would still be, you know, playing, you know, poker with three cards kind of thing. And now that we have this, as soon as we can get it open, we can start working, and Oxford County, I can assure you from talking with staff, is very keen to play our role in the transitional housing component that has to come for these people when they have, have got the services they need through the Heart Hub, and make that continuum of service that will move them on to a more independent form of living. I really cannot commend all of you and thank all of you enough on behalf of all hundred-and-twenty, whatever, thousand residents of Oxford County, how much this is needed. I think you all know from the work that you do how much it is needed, but for residents, I think, as Counselor Gilvezzi said, like, the excitement, the sense of relief that, okay, now something is going to happen, right? Now people have a thing, we can start to do a thing. So, normally don't thank people enough about these kinds of things at council meetings, but in this case, wow, like, on behalf of all residents of the county, wow, thank you, and, and I think you know already from talking to our staff, let us know what we can do to support, we are there to make this work. Thank you. Counselor Martin?
Just to add to your comments, Warden Ryan, people might not realize that the concept of Heart Hubs was raised in August at the AMO conference, however many months ago, and then the application was due in October. But the work on this file actually started months before the concept of, of Heart Hubs was announced by the province, and so, credit to O H T and Woodstock Hospital for recognizing long before the concept was even verbalized that this was desperately needed in our community. And for Woodstock Hospital to, to go to the lengths that they did to secure a location even before a full announcement had, had been made, and so, very clearly demonstrating to the community that we are committed to addressing mental health and addiction, and so, deep appreciation for your work and foresight to, to put the wheels in motion to align with funding announcements.
Counselor Acioni?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Warden. I think along with Counselor Martin's comments, should be recognized, the Woodstock Board of Trust, they're the ones that were talking about a campus of care, they were the ones that realized something needed to be done very, very early, long before, again, the Heart Hub concept, and for their work, again, with the cooperation, of course, from the management team at Woodstock Hospital to go out and buy this building, and, yeah, it closed the week before the announcement on January twenty-seventh, and I put this announcement to, one day, we're going to recognize, like, how did we live without a secure house here in Oxford County? How do we live without a brand-new hospital here in Oxford County? This is right along those lines. I have no doubt that decades from now will be recognized as a game changer and such a need, so thank you again.
Any other discussion? We should wrap it up, because they've all got their coats on, ready to go at the door and go and get this Heart Hub open, and we shouldn't delay them any longer. Thank you very much. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And consideration of correspondence, I'm not sure who's got a motion for that correspondence that was added late. Counselor, Deputy Warden Petrie, maybe, or? Because we adopted an agenda that added correspondence, so somebody's got to do something with that correspondence. Deputy Warden Petrie?
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, second by Counselor Mayberry, that the correspondence for the Mayor of Ingersoll be received as information.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And eight-point-two-point-one, Human Services, H S twenty-twenty-five dash oh-two dash twenty-twenty-four, sorry, twenty-twenty-four, Progress Report, Ten Year Housing and Homelessness Plan, Housing for All, Acting Director Smith, is there anything you want to highlight for council before I ask them for questions?
Thank you, Warden. Just a general comment, this is the first progress report on our new Housing for All Plan, the ten-year shelter plan that was adopted by County Council in August of twenty-twenty-four. It does show progress in the five main areas of that plan, and available for any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Questions from council on the report? Counselor Gilvezi?
Thank you, through you, Warden, just one question. I had read in here about encampment outreach, and maybe if you could just describe that, and there's a second part to that question would be, does the county know where all the encampments are? Like, is there any mapping being done to identify those areas? Thank you.
Through the Warden to Counselor Gilvezzi. So, most recently, actually, I should go back, twenty-twenty-four, we did initiate Municipal Five-One-One to start actually mapping encampments. We now successfully have all of the three urbans using that program, and there is a dedicated staff member from each of the urbans that's working with our staff as well on more of a regional outreach team. It is in the earlier stages, but we are working to have more of a consistent approach for encampment response. So, I will say we'll probably have a further update in a subsequent county council report, but we are working on that, and we do know where the current encampments are.
Any other questions on the report? Counselor Acioni?
Thank you, through you, Warden. Moved by myself, second by Counselor Gilvezzi. Resolved that the recommendation contained in report H S twenty-twenty-five dash zero-two, titled Twenty-Twenty-Four Progress Report, Ten Year Housing and Homelessness Plan, Housing for All, be adopted.
Any discussion? Counselor Acioni?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Warden. More of a thank you again to Ms. Smith, it's, it's been a, I know what you've been going through, and the staff been going through, to put all this together, it's really been changing, and just thank you for the leadership role you've been doing here and putting this together, because I really like the way this is forming up, so thank you.
Any other discussion? I started, when I went through this report, started making some notes of highlights and then gave up after a while, because there was so many. Now, I, I say that, but at the same time, it's also clear, and, and I, and I know from having conversations with Director Smith about this, that, and I don't, this is not intended as a slight against staff at all, but clearly, what we're doing is still not enough, because there's still, I think in January, a hundred-and-sixty-something people on the by-name list, I think it was, a hundred-and-sixty-one. So, you know, clearly not enough. However, I would say, when, you know, as Counselor Acioni said, when you read through this report, all the right things are happening. Unfortunately, none of them can happen fast enough, that's just the reality of, you know, getting funding, spending funding, building things, et cetera. But I think, I, I feel quite confident that the things that are happening in this report are the right things, and we just need to keep our foot on the accelerator and make sure that they happen, in collaboration with the delegation that we just heard on the Heart Hub, and make sure that happens, and, and supporting that and all the other things, and, and still looking forward to the homelessness response strategy that we're going to receive later this quarter as well. So, yeah, I, I think a positive report, you know, with respect to homelessness, never enough and never fast enough nowadays, but I think, I, I'm confident that the right things are happening. Anybody else before I call the vote? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Public Works, eight-point-three-point-one, P W twenty-twenty-five dash oh-nine dash twenty-twenty-five garbage bag tag fees, and Director Abercrombie, is there anything you want to highlight for council before I ask them for questions? I, I think there might be a couple of questions.
Thank you, Warden Ryan. As council is aware, our Oxford County operates on a user-pay system for waste disposal. This means that the garbage collection is funded through bag tags rather than on the general taxation. So, this system is designed to encourage the waste diversion by promoting recycling and composting, which ultimately will help reduce the amount of waste that's going into the landfill. So, the report before use day is recommending that the bag tag fee go from two to three dollars a bag effective May first, twenty-twenty-five. This is necessary to help with the increase in cost of the program, as well as growth, inflation, and our changes that we are anticipating in twenty-twenty-seven with our new contract. Without this adjustment, unfortunately, our current reserve will run out of funds and is projected to be very low in funds by the end of the year, as shown in the report. So, we believe it's important to maintain a user-pay system in the county for the long-term sustainability. This will also assist with the Source Separator Organics Program that is going to start being rolled out in twenty-twenty-six, also referred to as the Green Bin Program, and we estimate that one-third of the volume and half the weight of the current bags of garbage that are being disposed at the landfill are organics that could be now used as part of the Source Separator Organics Program. So, I'm sure there will be many questions, and both Senior Manager Frank Gross and I are available to answer them.
Thank you. Questions from council? Counselor Martin?
Yeah, my question is around, thank you, Warden Ryan, my question is around the May first date, and I'm curious, why May first? Because we approved a budget for twenty-twenty-five that covered the two-dollar rate all the way through, so we've pre-approved that budget, so why are we being asked to change this date for May first with a new fee as opposed to at the beginning of twenty-twenty-six when curbside organics would, would begin?
Thank you, through the Warden. It was identified previously in the Fees and Charges Update Report in September of twenty-twenty-four that the bag tag fee needed to be increased in order to be sustainable in twenty-twenty-five, so we were waiting for, to see where the new curbside collection program, what, what decision council was going to make on that, so we were waiting to see the outcome before we proposed the fee increase. So, it's important that we have that increase to cover the cost for twenty-twenty-five as well as ongoing years.
But as a follow-up, to be clear, we have approved a budget to address this cost, taking money from reserves to cover the balance of the bag tag shortfall, correct?
Through you, Warden, and, and it is correct that the anticipated deficit was identified in the twenty-twenty-five budget, you'll see that in the report as well, too. So, obviously, the earlier implementation of this allows, one, to implement the bag tag change sooner, to alleviate some of that pressure of the deficit and, and reduce that deficit to a smaller amount, and allow us to get back into a positive reserve balance earlier.
Anyone else? Counselor Acioni?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Warden, to Mr. Gross, the, I guess I pulled up the reports from twenty-twenty-one, looking at the, how do you say, I guess, comparative townships and municipalities that did different things, noticing some key changes with this newest report, Wellington County, for example, going from thirty-eight percent to almost fifty-one percent now, and I'm curious, have we looked at some of these other examples to see how their success has happened? If, if, like, do we really think, obviously, something they're doing must be right within the last four years to be something significant? Have we looked at what other townships are doing?
Through the Warden, I would say just, just at a high level, to see those municipalities that have user-fee systems and then their comparative diversion rates, but, but we haven't looked at, maybe specifically, at what their, those municipalities are doing.
Okay, and if I can continue on, I noticed on our twenty-twenty-five report that a few of the municipalities are not listed anymore, that didn't have any bag tag fees that were either a known or a partial user-pay system. Was there a reason those weren't included for comparison? Has there been a big change? I'm specifically talking about Norfolk County and Chatham Kent. Do you know, offhand?
Through the Warden, I apologize, no, I don't necessarily know why we didn't include those other municipalities, but I have to look into it further.
Okay, thank you. Just noticed that.
Any other questions? Counsel, Deputy Warden Petrie, and then Counselor Schaefer, then Counselor Gilvezi?
Through the Warden, yes, so, and any bag tags that have been purchased up to May first will still be valid, and we'll, we'll ask vendors at May first to declare their inventory, so we're, we're basing that on the honor system, that, that vendors will, will, will be honest in what their inventory is, and then we'll ask them to, we'll invoice them for that difference then.
I think it was Counselor Schaefer, then Counselor Gilvezzi, and now also Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Warden, through you. One of the issues people have with bag tags is whenever they're increased, there's always a concern of illegal dumping increasing. It's a two-part question, I guess, did we see that the last time that the, it was ten years ago, I guess, that when the rate was changed and the bag cost was changed, was there an increase in illegal dumping? And do you expect to see an uptick in it with this increase?
Through the Warden, I, I'm not aware either way if there was an increase when, in illegal dumping when the bag tag program was initially implemented, and I, I don't know if we'll see, we'll see an increase there. Obviously, that does happen, but I, I don't know that it's a, a major, a major problem, but it, but it is, it is a fact of, a fact of life, I guess.
And I should have written it down, but I think it's Counselor Gilvezzi now.
Okay, thank you. Through you, Warden, will the, will the new tags, like, be a different color?
Through the Warden, no, they'll be the same color.
Same color, okay. And so then there'll be, basically, I'd answered one of my other questions, that'll be basically like the stamp, and then it's good moving forward. Is there not a problem, though, with people stuffing garbage in, like, I know, like, in downtown core areas, people are stuffing garbage bags in there, you know, they may come early in the morning, or garbage cans that may exist on trailheads and things like that. Have you experienced any of that in the past?
Through the Warden, probably a question that would be more appropriate for, for the area municipalities, since county doesn't have parks, but, but I, I am aware that that does occur, so the issue with putting garbage receptacles in parks or trails, for example, is that people use them, and unfortunately, they, they bring garbage from home, and I try to avoid bag tag fees that way.
Counselor Tate?
Through the chair, and I'll just answer that, yes, up and down Dundas, there's garbage every single day, and at Piddock, the garbage cans are full every day, all around it. I just had a question on the administration of the bag tags, do you know what the cost is? Because it seems to me we're spending a lot of money on administration, which maybe if we didn't, we wouldn't have bag tags.
Through the Warden, just deferring to corporate services, do we, are we, do we know administration costs?
The Warden, so for administration, what we've done in the past is we take our Waste Management Administration budget, and we allocate a certain percentage towards the bag tag program. It's been consistent throughout the entire ten years, I think it's about forty-five percent, and that's what gets allocated to the waste collection program. Everything else in the waste collection program for costs are the curbside collection contract, as well as the tipping fees at the landfill. Those are the only administration costs.
Counselor Martin?
Thanks, Warden Ryan. Do we know how many pink two-dollar tags are in inventory, in the county's inventory right now, or out with vendors?
Through the, through the Warden, we, we can determine that number, I don't have that number with me or in front of me today.
Like a ballpark, are there ten thousand? Are there a hundred thousand? Are there four million tags? How many do we print out at a time, and do, have we stopped printing knowing that this might be in the queue? What I'm trying to get at is, what's going to keep an individual from going out and buying five years' worth of two-dollar tags to get ahead of the three-dollar fee?
Through the Warden, yeah, just, we, we print, we print in bulk each year, I, I don't know that exact number, but in the tens of thousands, I would say. We are, we have discussed how, how do we control that, you know, that uptick in people purchasing it. It's, it's going to be challenging to prevent individuals from, say, buying fifty or a hundred. I, I think the best we can do is, is maybe restrict unusually large orders, say, from vendors. And we have, in, in our, in our financial model, we have accounted for some of that overlap, so we are going to have bag tags that people have purchased at two dollars. to have bag tags that people have purchased at $2 sort of in the system. So we've accounted for that. So we've based on approximately, say, six months of overlap, where people will still have the $2 bag, bag tags.
Counsel Mayberry?
Thank you, if I can, Warden. So are we going to actually have new bag tags, or we're just going to keep using the same bag tags and $3 and such and so to?
Through the warden, yeah, we're just going to keep the bag tags that we have and start charging $3 effective May 1st.
So a couple of points there. Then it doesn't matter how many bag tags we have. We're not throwing them away. Second thing would be the cost of administering, whether I pay $2, $3, or $5, which is what it should be, is exactly the same, right? I either write a check or I don't write a check. I either pay in cash, I don't pay in cash. So I think, I'm not terribly concerned about administrative costs. I'm not terribly concerned about how many bag tags. I do think that there'll be a few people who will rush out and buy a year's supply or whatever. And quite frankly, in my case, that's probably 10. But I, I think if you have money to invest today, and we get all that money, I guess we're going to have to just suck up the interest on it and say, well, that'll offset a little bit of the increase. But I'm not terribly concerned about that. I'm far more concerned that $3 isn't enough. Thank you.
Let's all just collectively pretend that there was a question mark at the end of that, and we'll move on. Any other, any other questions on the report? So a question from me about diversion. The original intent of the bag tag program was to encourage people, well, two-pronged, I think, one, to recover the costs of collection on a user pay basis, and two, hopefully, to discourage people or encourage people to divert from their garbage bag and into, at that time, recycling. Do we have any estimate of how effective it is as a tool for to encourage diversion?
Thank you. Yeah, so we, when when the user fee program was originally established in 2003, we did see an initial uptick in diversion of 11%. So generally, municipalities that have user fee programs see a higher residential waste diversion rate.
Anyone else? Another one for me, then. So if I understand the report correctly, then I might have these numbers backwards. 30% by volume of bags is potentially source separated organics, and 50% by weight is potentially. So in theory, then, if people, you know, I'm not going to pretend that 30% of what people are going to fully realize that potential, but but I mean, if people did divert 15 or 20%, so half, say, of what could be into green bins, then in theory, they would buy approximately a corresponding fewer number of bag tags over the course of a year, not in a given week necessarily, but over the course of a year, correct?
That's correct.
Anyone else? One more then from me. Do we, similarly, then, if when when we move to the six-day collection cycle, I can't remember how many fewer collections, how many fewer collections is that in a year than, is it 10 fewer collections in the year?
10.
So so in theory, then, people would also be buying, maybe not 10 fewer, but some fewer number because of a six-day collection as opposed to a five-day collection as well, correct?
That's correct.
So then, in theory, there's the possibility that while people pay more for an individual tag over the course of a 52-week year, they may pay not the, not the full amount more in tags, because as a result of SSO and six-day collection, in theory, they would be buying fewer tags. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Schaefer?
Thank you, Warden. With the change to producers doing the recycling, is there currently things being thrown out now that will be recycled because of the change in in responsibility for that? Because I know they will take things that we currently do not.
Through the warden, yeah, that's correct, although we don't know what the acceptable list of materials will be for the provincial common collection system. But do expect that it'll, it'll expand from what we're currently used to.
Deputy Warden Petrie?
Thank you, Warden, through you. With regards to the mayor, sorry, the warden's comments around, and I totally agree with those that, or sorry, questions about the efficiency of different amount of pickups and organic systems cutting down on it. I kind of share some concerns of Mayor Mayberry, like, is this going to be enough on the balance of things to be able to increase the amount of money needed? Are we going to balance out on revenue coming in? Or is this going to provide the increase in revenue needed? Is that something that's going to have to be monitored over time to be able to ensure that, to see what happens? I know there's a lot of changes going on. It's really hard to predict. So but that's just a concern.
Through the warden, yeah, that's correct. We, based on the projected cost for the next five years, we were, we're estimating that at $3 per bag tag, that that'll allow for the reserve balance to, to be maintained to, to the, close to the target.
Counsel Mayberry?
So we now have a situation where we're going to have fewer bags, but a greater cost. I'm just wondering, what percentage of change in the number of bags did county staff project as compared to what I might have projected? Like, you must have said, well, instead of having 100,000 bags, we're only going to have X number of bags of garbage or whatever. I'm just, I'm just curious what the percentage is, because I would suggest if, first of all, six-day, you use less bags. And second of all, if people are being more conscious and they are able to take the organics out and that sort of stuff, they're going to use less bags. And I would suggest that anybody that doesn't reduce the number of bags by 25% or maybe more is, there's something the matter with their thinking. So I'm just curious, like, you must have chosen a number to be able to come up with, and that's what I'd like to know. Thank you.
Through the warden, yeah, we did estimate approximately one-third reduction in the contents of the black bag. So and and based on the 2021 black bag audit, it did show that recycling materials and yard waste is still in the black bag. So there's opportunities for residents to reduce their garbage set outs.
Counsel Racioli?
Thank you. Through you, Warden, to Mr. Gross. The diversion rate has gone down if we're looking at the same charts from five years ago. But my fear here is the with the change of responsibility for recycling, I truly believe we're going to have more recycling and garbage than we've ever seen recently. With the changes, we don't know what the dates are, we don't know how they're going to be collected, we don't know if they're going to be same days, different days. And I truly am fearful that we're simply going to see them throw in the garbage bag. So does that have anything to do with your fears and why we think we should increase the bag tags to try to encourage people to use recycling more? Was that part of this at all?
Through the warden, yeah, certainly, a user fee program, that that's the main intent, is to encourage residents to recycle rather than to pay to throw out their garbage. Although, in theory, the producer responsibility program should should promote, further promote recycling, because it'll be consistent across the province. So I think, I think there, there's confusion now where each municipality has sort of varying programs with different acceptable materials, so.
So if I can continue on, do you honestly believe the diversion rate will get better, then, with the new responsibility for recycling, moving forward?
Through the warden, yes, I do.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counsel Schaefer?
Thank you, Warden, through you. One of the complaints I get about this is that it's a 50% increase all in one year. Do we, is that intentionally, do we not change this until we start getting close to our end of our surplus? Or could we consider going forward, maybe a little smaller increase more often, instead of a huge jump at once? I know it may end up be the same amount, but it's a little easier, I think, for people to to handle. Is that something we can consider?
Through the warden, yeah, I think, you know, more frequent price changes, I guess, is a bit an issue, too. We talked about that a bit, where you have that overlap, where then people, people will purchase more, more bag tags to avoid the price increase, right? So there's, I guess, a potential for greater loss, and it's an administrative issue. So it's, I guess, it's an easier rollout from a staff perspective if we have, if we reduce the number of price increases over time.
Any other questions? Counsel Gervaisi?
I'm reading an alternate motion. And I have sent it to the clerk, but there's, I wordsmithed it a little bit more since sitting here and listening to conversation. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Tate. Be it resolved that a report be brought back to council, which would provide other options, such as a hybrid solution, which would explore one free bag to rate payers per collection cycle, with additional bags required to have a $2, $2, $3 tag per bag, and that the report identify the cost of production of bag tags, as well as the cost to administer the tags, which would include delivery to Oxford outlets.
So do you have the wordsmithed version of that to the clerk?
Yeah, there's a couple of words, and I can come up and confirm that.
Please do. I just want to, before I go back to council, I want to be sure that you and the clerk and then the rest of council have exactly the right wording.
Be it resolved that a report be brought back to council, which would provide other options, such as a hybrid solution, which would explore one free bag to rate payers per collection cycle, with additional bags required to have a $2 to $3 tag per bag, and that the report identify the cost of production of bag tags, as well as the cost to administer the tags, which would include delivery to Oxford outlets.
Counsel Gervaisi is the mover. Do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Warden. Okay, a couple of things. So when the, when I first read the report, what I thought was there's only one option here. But I think that there's other options we can, we can explore. And also, taking a look, and I believe Mayor Ancioni mentioned this before, about looking at best practices from other regions as well. I know that in the south of the county, we're strategically placed next door to one county that doesn't have bag tags at all. And then we're next door to another area that does the one free bag a week. I think we need to explore other options. We are, we are going to have a lot of changes in our recycling. And I think that, given the economy coming forward, this is hard for people to stomach, that, an increase. It might seem like only a dollar per tag, per tag, but it's a lot. I spoke to a variety store yesterday that sold $3,000 worth of tags yesterday. So people were in, they have been in buying tags for the last two days, stocking up years' worth of supply. The other thing is, when I read the report, it talked about adding a significant increase by putting this in the taxes. But are there not savings we can find? We never talk about streamlining, finding efficiencies, or, you know what, spending a dollar, saving a dollar. I don't know why everything always needs to be added onto the operating base. And maybe there's some other areas where we could save dollars to be able to incorporate at least some of this cost in the tax base. I am concerned. I do receive complaints from my local BIA that trash cans are stuffed with garbage every day, and they've got a lot of removal out of the downtown core. And people are doing that directly to save the tag. The other thing is, I believe it said the income, or it would, you were taking, the revenue was around $4.5 million. So obviously, we're selling a significant number of bag tags, but that revenue doesn't show me where the expenses are and how much it costs to administer that. So that's why I'm asking for that. Finally, on an, in an environmental perspective, think about all the garbage we're actually creating from bag tags, right? We're throwing out the sheet that it sticks on, there's glue, there's paper. You know, it's waste, and we're actually creating more waste. So thank you.
I think it was Counsel Schaefer is the second, or was it, or Counsel Tate? Counsel Tate?
Yeah, through the chair, I fully support the motion. I think we need more information. A lot of it's based on estimates. I don't know if people realize the dollar extra is a lot. And for a family, that is going to add every week, which is unacceptable. And I think there's ways we can find, we can save money. I am concerned about the account, the amount that we are incurring to administer it. It doesn't make any sense to me. We're incurring 45% of it, is administering the tags. Well, that should be in the pocket of the taxpayers, not the other way around. So I fully support the motion.
Just before I ask, anyone else wants to speak to it, I do, on behalf of staff, feel a need to respond to the comment that we never consider efficiencies or savings and other ways of doing things, because we did have a report on our last agenda where staff identified an opportunity to save us hundreds of thousands of dollars without us asking. So I just feel the need to say that. Before I ask for anybody else who wants to speak to the motion, Deputy Warden Petrie, then Counsel Racioli?
Yeah, I can't support this one, because it's not a free bag. Regardless, there's costs, there's amount of money that we have to have to make sure that the contract can go and pick up the garbage, pay the tipping fees, print the tags, get them out, and administer that. That, even if you have a free bag, that's going to go on taxes and raise taxes. So the revenue's got to come from somewhere. I believe in the report, and I know in the report, it stated that, you know, a bag tag is a fairer system, because it's a user pay system, because industrial ICI doesn't participate in this system. So therefore, they shouldn't be charged for it. And on a tax basis, they would be charged. I highly doubt that anybody who's throwing garbage in a container, because it happens in Ingersoll as well, it's usually the merchants, and they're not going to stop because there's a bag tag. It's just convenient for them, because they don't want to have to, they just put it out whenever. They put out, garbage day is every day for them, instead of just one day or every six days. I think that this, I think that what's being proposed, it may change the way that the funds are raised, but at the same time, they're still going to have to be raised. And now we have a real issue, because we have passed a budget, and that was anticipated in the budget. And I would almost consider that a budget motion. But now that we're considering it here, I just can't support it, because at the end of the day, nothing's free. This is to cover costs, and we need to cover those costs. We chose to have a bag tag system. The only way out of that is if we have a bin system, which we don't, we don't have that option right now, or if we put it all on taxes, and we know it's going to raise it 5.5%. So some, everybody's paying more. So this is the most fairest way. It has been raised since 2014. You know, nobody likes an increase, but it's got, sometimes it's got to happen. Like, we, we raise taxes every year. We need to have that income come in to cover the program for those who are using it. Garbage collection contracts across the board have gone through the roof because of labor and material costs, the capital cost of the trucks. I think we just need to do, be prepared to have a very good implementation plan and a communication plan on why this is necessary, rather than trying to hide where the costs increase are. And I'm not worried about the efficiency standpoint. I'm sure that staff are doing the least amount of work on this possible to try, they're very busy. So I'm not, I'm not worried about that. I think that it's, I believe, I agree with the warden that if there was efficiency, staff bring them forward and for our consideration. So unfortunately, I can't support it this time.
Counsel Racioli?
Thank you. Through you, Warden. I don't like bag tags. I never have. It's been a pet peeve of mine ever since they did begin. Let me just start off that way. I understand the idea behind them and the, and the idea of wanting to reduce bags. So I really like this motion. If we really want the diversion to change, having the opportunity of one free bag, than paying for those subsequent bags at, you know, I'd like to keep it at least at the $2 personally, but I'd love to see the report to see what that math looks like. I do know it's, it's very much a pain for our BIAs and our parks departments and everything else, all for those reasons that people are getting rid of those bags. So I would hope if they have the opportunity to put one bag out, let's call it free, they would simply do that in a responsible way, instead of throwing them in all of our, our parks and downtowns. So I'll certainly support this.
Counsel Peterson?
I'm kind of on the opposite end. I, I do like the bag tag myself. Yep, they're a pain. I agree 100%. I am one of those people that goes and buys 50 of them at the start of the year, so I don't have to go and get any more. Now my kids move back home, and now I have to buy them halfway through the year. But I, I'm a big supporter. But I'm a big supporter of them. I'll tell you why. I walk down the street, and I'll see somebody with three bags of garbage out and no recycling. And you can see it, I can see it that's in the bag where it's poking out. And I know for me, I recycle like crazy. I have usually four bins out there all the time. I know it sounds like a lot of money, but I agree. It's been technically, we're in the 11th year, and if you put, with the new system, it's not even $4 a month. It won't even be, it'll be just barely over $3 a month if you have one bag. I get the whole concept behind it. I can't support it. When I look at the free bag, what happens if you have an apartment unit with five people upstairs, and one of those residents puts five bags with no garbage out there, and the rest, um, put it on? And somebody comes along and says, well, I'm not taking that. So there is, I know that's kind of nitpicking at it, but I kind of look at it, that the same thing with our recycling that's coming up, if the business doesn't, how do we declare which is which? So it's kind of the same, the same point, is if somebody, somebody's going to try and beat the system. They always do. Our garbage cans in Drumble, same thing. People dump garbage in them all the time. We actually ended up removing one, because it just kept getting full all the time. But for that point, I can't support it. I'm sorry.
Just before I go back to Counselor Tate for a second time, anybody else? Counselor Tate?
Through you, just a couple of comments. Some people that don't put the recycling out is because they take them to the recycling depot, so I wouldn't embarrass people by saying that, because it doesn't mean they don't recycle. I don't put mine out, because I take it myself. It does sound like a lot, because it is a lot. And for a family, that is a lot of money. I think everybody around here should be concerned about the administration costs, and it's just a report. I don't believe it's, I think it was the options. And we have a responsibility to the taxpayer to look at how we can help them. We have been spending money around this table like it's water, and the taxes are so high, and now we're going to add another dollar to bag tags. I find it unacceptable to at least get a report, and I would like a recorded vote.
Anyone else? Counselor Mayberry?
I would agree with Counselor Tate. We are responsible to the taxpayer, and I would suggest then that we might want to be responsible to the taxpayer. And this is an opportunity where user pay, actually, the average taxpayer will pay less, because the average taxpayer will be more careful. And those who want to put out five bags a week, or 10 bags, or whatever, are going to pay their fair share, their fair share of the cost. And so I think that it's responsible, hiding it in a tax levy, instead of telling people, this is what it costs for all that crap you bought, took home, played with for five minutes, and then threw in a bag to get rid of. There is a cost to that. There's a cost environmentally, there's an economic cost, and there's a tax or a municipal cost to it. As far as I'm concerned, $3 a bag isn't enough, but I'm prepared to certainly pay that.
Deputy Warden Petrie?
Thank you, Warden. Through you, just to pick up on a comment that Counselor Mayberry made. If you took all the prod, the garbage out of a bag and added up what that cost, purchase, and then divided that by $3 to get rid of it, it is a phenomenal value to have someone put your waste out to the curb, and then have someone come collect it for $2, or $3, or $4, or $5. People pay more to have their food delivered from McDonald's or other places. This is a convenient system that is of high level of service for our residents. We could just say, hey, there's lots of northern communities, you have to take your refuse to a depot and put it in there. This is curbside collection. The contracts have gone up. We know this, because the cost of capital and labor has gone up. We need to be financially stable, we need to be, we need to be responsible. We can put it on taxes, we know that. We can put the whole thing on taxes, or we can use a user pay system. And I agree with Counselor Peterson, that the people who use it should pay for it. I'm, you know, I have myself and my wife and two cats. We put out a bag a week, and I think with organics, it would be a lot less than that, because unfortunately, there's stuff, you know, you get food waste in there. So there's an opportunity to offset this increase by participating in organics, and increase more in recycling, and make sure that that, and then not have the smells and stuff continue throughout that six-day cycle. So I just can't support it. I think that there's ways to go around it from a consumer, and I think that, given the way that things are, the cost of that bag tag increase is responsible, and it is the least amount of what's in that bag, including the bag itself.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Warden, Ryan. I believe that once source-separated organics collection begins, we will all use fewer black bags of solid waste. People who truly adopt it will use fewer bags. When you think about where your garbage is in your house, you have a little wee garbage can in the bathroom, a little wee one in the bedroom, but the big garbage can in the kitchen, and it's because of the intended and unintended food waste. Once we start to separate those, very few black bags go out. In my experience, and having had green bin collection in a previous life, you go from putting out one to two bags a week, to sometimes only putting out a bag every two to three weeks, because there's hardly anything in there. It's dry, it doesn't stink. However, we approved a budget for 2025. On page 142, we approved the reserve transfer. We all supported that. No one brought forward a motion to adjust that, to amend it, to question it, or to change it. We approved that for 2025. So for me, May 1st implementation, when source-separated organics doesn't start until, for only 40, 45% of the population, doesn't start until the beginning of 2025, 2026, and the rest of the county in 2027. I would like to see that report back on some of the unknowns that have come up in question. Counselor Schaefer asked the question about how organics, or recycling. We don't know what will and will not be eligible to go into a future blue bin program or into our black bags. I feel like I need to know some of those answers before I can make a decision on this for our community. So I support looking, asking for the report with options, I believe is what is outlined here.
Anyone else? Counselor Ancioli?
Thank you, Warden. Through you. Again, if diversion is the ultimate goal of this, having, to encourage people to use one bag and one bag only, if it's free, I think it's still going to be the best way to do that with all the changes that are coming. I couldn't agree more that, right now, with so many unknowns coming forward in garbage recycling, that now is not the time to make these decisions partway through the year. And of course, the cost is significant. 50% is 50%. I don't care if it's, it's those families that I'm fearing, that unfortunately do have the most garbage, that are going to be hit the most, and they can't afford it the most. And that's why I'm going to vote in favor of that.
Anyone else? Counselor Schaefer, then Counselor Mayberry?
Thank you, Warden. Through you. I can support the motion, just for the fact that it gives us something to look at. You've got to remember, every bag that goes into that landfill is shortening the life of that landfill. So we've got to look at a way to, to have fewer bags going into the landfill. And I know it's problematic with a free bag at apartment buildings. I mean, I don't know how that's going to get handled, but I will support it, just basically, because I want to know all the facts before we make a decision like this. So I'll support it.
Counselor Ancioli?
Yeah, I feel I should.
It was Counselor Mayberry, and then back to Counselor, sorry.
Just a quick comment on Counselor Martin's suggestion that this wasn't part of the budget. There in fact was a comment during the budget about the need for increasing the bag tag fee sometime next, this year.
Counselor Ancioli?
Well, I would just say that yesterday, I got a complaint by some city staff, that there is three bags left in a complex with no bag tags. So that happens anyways. I know Counselor Peterson mentioned it, and Counselor Schaefer. So that does happen on a regular basis, that no bag tags, and how do you trace it without literally opening it up and going sorting through? So that's happening anyways. By the case of eliminating the need for a bag tag for a lot of people, will free up, I think, a lot of staff time and worries, instead of adding to it.
Anyone else?
I have a few comments. First thing is, I want to point out another more relevant example of efficiencies, and that is the six-day collection cycle, with respect to this specific issue that council already, that staff brought forward, and council already adopted. The other thing is, several people have mentioned free bag. There's no such thing. There's no such thing as a free bag. We put a bag out at the road, and a truck comes with a driver to collect it, it costs us money. There's no question about that. There is no free bag. No such thing as a free bag. It costs money to collect that bag. The only thing that we're debating, I would suggest, is how we fund the collection of that bag. So I think several comments have been made too, about, you know, it costing a lot of money, and how can we help people, and cost, and the cost is significant. And I couldn't agree more. The cost of collection has gone up, and the cost of collecting our waste is significant. I've had conversations with several residents, though, who have said they adamantly oppose it going on their tax bill, because when it's a bag tag, they have an ability to control, some ability to control the expense that they're incurring. So they work hard to get it down to a bag a week, a bag every two weeks. And they were quite opposed to the idea of putting it on the property tax bill, because then they have no control. And they look at their neighbors, and they say, I put out a bag every two weeks, my neighbor puts out three bags every week. If it's on my tax bill, I'm paying for them to put out more garbage. So I think if we really want to respect people and give them the ability to help themselves to control costs, bag tags is the way to do that. If you control your bag tags, you control what you purchase, control what you waste, control what you put in recycling, control what you put in the green bin, you have the control over your own bills, your own expenses. Whereas we put it in the property tax bill, we can, if we get $2 to $3 a tag, we can go to $0 a tag, no tags, 5.5% increase on the property tax bill. I think that is unbelievably cruel to the taxpayer, to say, we're going to ask you all to just fund everybody's garbage at a 5.5% tax increase, no bag tags. I think if we really want to respect taxpayers and think about how we can help them, we give them control over their own expenses and say, go for it. If you want to put out three bags, nine bucks. You want to put out a bag every two weeks, it's $1.50 a week. I think that's how we respect people and give them the ability to help themselves. So I think we have, you know, the information we need to make this decision. There's a cost to collecting waste. The debate is, in my opinion, how do we fund that cost? And I think, I'm always in favor of giving people control over their own expenses, and equitably distributing that cost based on an attempt at a user pay system. So for that reason, I think the report that we have in front of us is perfectly adequate, and I won't be supporting the motion on the floor to get the other report, but there you go. Anybody else, before I call the question, and a reminder again that it will be a recorded vote. Counselor Tate?
Yeah, just one last comment through the chair. I appreciate your comment about the taxpayer being able to control their expenses, but when you look at the budget around here and what we spend money on, there's a lot of savings we could have, so they wouldn't have the bag tags and that expense. And the taxpayer has no say in that. So a lot of the stuff, we are putting on them without them having any say. So I agree to some point, but the big picture is, the taxes are really high. So maybe what we should be doing is looking at where we're spending money, so it doesn't affect this.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, if you're speaking about the budget that you voted in favor of, and the tax rate that you had voted in favor of, then I would agree, there's a lot of expenses there. But I think this council unanimously, if I remember correctly, voted in favor of that budget. And I think that I've already cited two examples today, where since that budget was passed, staff have come forward with opportunities for savings, including one specifically relevant to garbage collection. So I think this is completely consistent with the budget that we passed, the strategic direction that we've given to staff, and the report that we have in front of us is reflective of both of those things. So I don't see it as problematic at all to say, there is a cost to this service, we're going to recover that cost in an equitable way that gives control to residents. I'm certainly not in favor of just bumping up the tax rate across the board for everybody in the county, to give people, you know, air quotes, "free" bags, which is frankly just an illusion. Anyway, anybody else, before I call the question? All right, and it is a recorded vote, so I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Recorded vote requested by Counselor Tate. Deputy Warden Petrie?
No.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Counselor Mayberry?
No.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Palmer?
No.
Counselor Ancioli?
Yes.
Warden Ryan?
No.
Counselor Gilvezzi?
Yes.
Counselor Schaefer?
Yes.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Okay, that's a tie, so it's defeated.
So the motion on the floor is defeated as a result of a tie. So somebody's going to have to come up with some kind of other motion to deal with the report in question. Counselor Petrie? Deputy Warden Petrie?
Thank you, Warden. I'll move the recommendation contained in the report. Move myself, second by Counselor Mayberry, that the recommendation contained in the report, PW2025-09, titled 2025 Garbage Bag Tags Fees Be Adopted.
Deputy Warden Petrie is the mover. Do you wish to speak to that?
No, I've said everything I need to say during the last debate, and I think that, well, the only thing I will say is, is that, you know, again, I don't think, with the type of, manual type collection, we all agreed to stay with a bag tag system. There is alternative methods with a bin type system, where you can charge yearly, and it could be changed yearly on that system, but that's not the system we have. We have a bag tag, we have a bag system, and I believe that this is the most equitable system out there, to provide people with choice. And yeah, nobody likes increases. And we can play the percentage game all you want, all day, and say, oh, it's a 50% increase, dollar for dollar, you know, you know, 1% of a million versus 10,000% of a dollar. You know what I mean? Like, it is an increase, but we need it to be able to make sure this is a sustainable program going forward, and there is options available. I truly think that we'll be coming back in a couple of years, saying, our reserves are not enough, because people are not using enough garbage bags for what we predicted. And so therefore, I will certainly support this.
Counselor Mayberry is the second.
No comment.
Anyone else? Counselor Gilvezzi?
I'd like a recorded vote, please. Thank you.
Anyone else? I guess I would just say a couple of things about this. So again, there is a cost to this service, and the debate here really, from my perspective, is how do we recover that cost? I would be astounded if any resident of Oxford could get a private contractor to come to their home and collect their garbage on a weekly basis for $3. I really, I really cannot imagine it, especially for people who live in rural areas. I'd be frankly stunned if I could get somebody to come to my house for $30 a week and collect my garbage. I think, as the deputy warden said, nobody likes an increase. I'm not going to enjoy it either. I'm going to, I buy bag tags. I don't enjoy paying more for it. But again, there's a cost, and I want my garbage taken away. And they come, you know, with the exception of last week with the great snowstorm, they come every week, no matter what, and they take it away. So I think that there is value in this. I also, for context, I Googled during the debate what the cost of DoorDash is in Woodstock. It's between, ranging from $2 to $6 to have a Big Mac brought to your house, two to six bucks. But every week, regardless of the weather, they come and take your garbage away for three bucks a bag at most. I think there's value in this. I think we don't like to see the increase, and this draws people's attention to it, but I think that there's value in this. So again, while people don't want to pay an increase, I think we want the garbage collected. There is no such thing as a free bag. Why don't we recover the cost in an equitable way that people have control over, instead of putting on the tax levy? And again, wiping out the bag tags entirely would mean a 5.5% levy increase. I cannot stomach putting 5.5%, or even a significant portion of 5.5% back on the levy to eliminate bag tags. I think the report from staff is entirely responsible, consistent with our strategic initiatives, and support of the resolution, of the motion on the floor. Any other discussion before the vote? Counselor Ancioli, then Counselor Martin?
Thank you, through you, Warden. Again, I'm going to go to the diversion. Looking at the charts that county provided back in 2021, because unfortunately, with the change in the collection, a lot of these partial system, user pay systems, don't report the diversion rates. But if we go back just to, most recently, as four years ago, City of Kingston, you get one free bag, $2 bags, they got a 61.6% diversion rate. Corther Lakes, Dufferin County, one free bag, $2 bag tags, anything after that, 57%. County of Peterborough, varies within municipality, but again, $2, so there's, obviously, they get one or two free bags, and they got a 51.5% diversion. Municipality of Muskoka, again, this is their own data. own data that shown if we're really trying to divert less waste, and that's one of the ultimate goals behind this, then why don't we give the opportunity to allow residents to have one free bag in order to get that diversion where we want to see it, and then look at costs afterwards to make sure that it's being adequately paid for? Because I agree, I know there's no free bag. I know that. But at the end of the day, if we can save a taxpayer an extra dollar or two because they can, they have that option to put less bags out with it, putting a tag on it, then let's give them that opportunity.
Just a question. How much would you be willing to raise taxes to give people their free bag?
That's what we need to report for. I think that's the whole point of our previous motion, was to find that out.
Counselor Martin?
So for clarity, I think we could call those untagged bags rather than free bags because they aren't free. For this motion, as I've already stated, I know that once we begin source separated organics, people will put out fewer bags. The May 1 implementation of the price increase is where I struggle. We won't start organics until January and for the rest of the county in 2027 to start the increase ahead of that. The increase is to align with, to encourage diversion. So it's the May 1 date that I struggle with. And for that reason, I won't be supporting the motion on the floor.
Anyone else? Counselor Mayberry, then Counselor Peterson?
So looking at diversions of other communities, I'm just curious, maybe staff could help us understand, how many of those in organics, how many other programs do they have in a diversion? What exactly is in the data? Because the reality is, the data is not the same for every municipality.
Through the warden to council, you may note at the bottom under that table, that's an attachment, number one, there are some little notes, footnotes. So all the communities such as Wellington, Quinte West, Sudbury, Kingston, and Dufferin County, they already have a source separate organic program. So those are noting, and that's what's helping them meet that higher diversion rate.
Counselor Peterson?
Just over the last two years, we've sat here at budget time and arguing about our budget increase and how big our budget increase is. Two years ago, we had some of our council members that voted against a huge budget increase, which that's the right. And at the time, really, I don't blame them. Yes, it was. But to add 2%, I'm just using a number because that's roughly what it's going to be. If you add 2% for one free bag, I can't justify a 2% tax increase for one free bag. I just, I can't justify those. I don't understand how I hear about tax increase, tax increase, and now we want to take a dollar a bag, which could be roughly $42 a year when we get to our new system if it's one bag a week, and now we want to add more to our taxes and our levy for people that don't want to recycle or whatever. I don't understand it, how we want to put more tax increase onto the levy.
Counselor Tate?
Through the chair, we're not asking for a tax increase. We're asking to look at savings elsewhere. I, as you noted, I was one of those that voted against the budget because it was ridiculous. We tried to remove a number of issues out of it, and we failed. This year, the budget wasn't quite as high. But if I knew this was going to happen, I would have asked for efficiencies in that budget, too. I know we tried to remove some other items from the budget that we didn't think were maybe cost efficient to the taxpayer, but it didn't pass. So I find this offensive, the comments that are being made about this to the taxpayer. This is not appropriate. They are not aware. It's just start, to implement it in May is unacceptable to me. The taxpayer should have some kind of warning, especially with the high taxes that we have implemented on top of them. So I just, there's so many unknowns. The reason for the report was to find out more information to see if there was savings. I would never vote to add more to the tax base. I think that's pretty clear, and I don't think the mover would have either.
Anyone else? Counselor Gilvezzi?
Thank you through you, Warden. Yeah, to clarify, obviously, okay, number one, about free, there is obviously nothing free. But there are other communities that do have like a hybrid options that are explorable. I would never support increasing taxes. And in fact, I was one also that voted against the budget. I am disappointed with some of the comments made around the table. We have two things to look at, diversion rates. So I concur with what the mayor of Woodstock has said. I think he has made great points. We put incentives out there to divert more from the landfill. That's the whole goal of everything. I don't know that we're going to achieve that. Anyways, thank you. I will not be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Anyone else? So Counselor Peterson, then Deputy Warden Petrie, and let's not repeat ourselves.
So I look at it this way. If, you talked about not being a tax increase. If we get a free bag for everybody, supposedly a free bag, where's the money coming for that free bag? It has, well, where's it going to come from? It has to come from the levy. There's no other place for it to come from. It has to come from a tax increase. I don't see how any other place you're going to get that money from. There's only one taxpayer, as we always say. That money has to come from the levy. There's no other way around it.
Deputy Warden Petrie?
Thank you, Warden, through you. You just can't look at diversion rates. We have a fiduciary responsibility to the corporation or the county of Oxford to make sure that we're financially stable. And yeah, sustainability is all about it. There's multiple facets to look here. You can say, obviously, diversion is a huge one. I think we just made the biggest change we could have this year is by implementing a green bin program. Yes, May 1 is 60 days from now. We are giving notice. The problem is, and what we all heard, is that people run out and buy things. They need to start the revenue collection earlier to be able to, because they know they're not going to have the same amount of revenue. If you started on day one, you're not going to have enough revenue, and actually, it's going to be a bigger increase in garbage bag tags because you're going to need more revenue to make up for that time period. There's, like, there's a time and place that we need to act responsibly and say, okay, there is a difference of systems. But we knew this was coming. We were told this when we voted for collection systems prior to the budget, we knew that we were going to increase this. It was 2014. It should have been done, you know, I know why staff does not like to do it all the time, because it is a pain in the butt, because people do make runs. But we do need to make a change eventually. Is it going to be 2050 and we're still going to say $2? Like, this is a manageable increase for people. It is not wanted. I can guarantee you that a 10% change, a 10 cents change in the case of gas has a larger increase this week than the week, and then this, when you fill up your tank. There are going to be increases in life. Not every decision is popular, but this is the only way to go that I agree is responsible to taxpayer because they do have a choice on it. And that is, not to repeat myself, I'll leave it there. Besides, it's not just a diversion option. That's one aspect of it.
Counselor Gilvezzi, then Counselor Acioli. Counselor Acioli?
Thank you. And I'm not going to repeat myself, except that diversion is the main reason to do this because of the, how we can save money in the long run for landfills and collection just in general. By encouraging diversion, we are going to be saving money, not just expense.
Anyone else? I think there's two reasons. There's diversion, and there's also equitable distribution of cost by a user pay system. Anyone else before I ask the clerk to do the recorded vote? All right, turn it over.
Recorded vote is requested by Counselor Gilvezzi. Counselor Acioli?
Sorry, just before we go ahead, should we have the motion read again? Yeah, can we read the motion again, the motion that's on the floor? I want to be, I want all 10 to be crystal clear.
So the motion on the floor is resolved that the recommendation contained in report PW 2025-09, titled 2025 Garbage Bag Tag Fees Be Adopted.
Go ahead.
Counselor Acioli?
No.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Tate?
No.
Counselor Schaefer?
No.
Warden Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilvezzi?
No.
Counselor Mayberry?
Yes.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
So we all have some work to do. I'm going to suggest that we take a break. Nobody gathers in a group of more than five and hammer something out because we can't go 5-5-5-5-5-5 all day long. Counselor Mayberry?
Well, I think probably we could, not that it'd be terribly productive. So I would suggest, though, that the result now is that the garbage bag tag stays at $2.
So I would suggest that there is no, because there's a report from staff that council put on the agenda, and we have not dealt with that report. So at the very least, somebody has to put something forward to deal with that report.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with, I agree with Counselor Mayberry that we just turn down the increase to $3. That's the way I read it.
And therefore, it can come back for reconsideration by anyone that can bring new information that voted in the affirmative.
Okay, give me a minute. All right, we're back from break. And so, we left off at 8.3.1 PW 2025-09, 2025 garbage bag tag fees. Two motions have failed to deal with the report. Am I seeing anyone else trying to do anything with this? I am not. So, we will move on then to item 8.3.2 PW 2025-10, 2024 drinking water system performance. And Director Abercrombie, is there anything you want to highlight for council before I ask them for questions?
I'm actually going to call up Senior Manager of Water Wastewater, Don Ford, to introduce this report to council.
Thank you through the warden and the council. This drinking water system report in front of you and the annual water system budget process are the primary methods by which council demonstrates due diligence to overseeing the county's municipal drinking water systems and meeting the standard of care provisions of the Safe Drinking Water Act. So, this county's 17 separate municipal drinking water systems with almost 11 million cubic meters of treated drinking water was annually sampled, 4,500 separate samples for bacteria, and were collected with just 17 samples being adverse, 0.38%, with those adverse results being investigated, re-sampled, and cleared. The results of over 60 different health-related chemical parameters are summarized in the annual report published to the web every year. Also noted in the report, the water service agreements are functioning effectively, and the consolidated operating plan provides a streamlined singular framework to ensure compliance, efficiency, and oversight in the county's water systems. Key highlights from the first year of the Backflow Prevention Program are included. We're building on feedback, and staff will refresh our communication with the certified contractors regarding the Oxford County program so that our customers receive consistent messaging in 2025. Also, you'll note that the MEC inspections have been completed on nine systems, eight of them at 100%, and one being interkep at 92%. That was due to two minor non-compliances for the interkep drinking water system, had to do with a loss of data for 40 minutes due to a UPS failure. The additional inspection results will be made available to council when inspections are completed, probably within the next two months. Further than that, there was five boil water advisories in 2024, one from low pressure, one from a category-two water main break, and three from E. coli results. They were re-sampled, cleared, and all incidents were reported to the MEC and the Medical Officer of Health, and no further action was required. Oxford County staff investigated all the adverse water quality incidents through the drinking water quality management system. An improvement and corrective action plan was established following a higher number of total color forms in '24. This included a detailed review of the sampling locations, enhanced identification of the sampling taps, updated disinfection methods for sampling taps, and a comparison of our laboratory quality control measures, all in an effort of continuous improvement. Also noted in the report, the 2024 source protection undertakings, which include the source protection plan issued contributing areas that are under review for nitrate for the 2024 year was the Woodstock-Thorton well field, the Strick Drain, and the Tilsonburg well, the area around well four and five. So, in summary, the 24 annual water system summary reports demonstrate public works continued oversight of the county's municipal drinking water system in order to provide safe, reliable, and sustainable supply of municipal drinking water for our residents and business users. Thank you.
Any questions for staff on the report? Counselor Atchoney?
Thank you through you, warden. Great report, actually. I learned so much from reading this wholesome report. The question I have is the water rebate program. Is that counting what I didn't? I wasn't familiar with that. In fact, I hadn't heard about it in so long that can anyone from any township, anywhere in Oxford County apply for those? And if I remember correctly, that is for toilets and like washing machines and things like that?
Yes, under our water conservation efforts, that's quite right. And yes, anyone in the county can apply for those rebates.
May I continue? I'm going to assume, and I apologize, I haven't looked. That's online. They can find out more information at the county website, just for those watching.
Yes, we have it on the website for our conservation efforts, and there's the information there. There's also contact information. Our staff would be happy to help them. There's those programs, like you mentioned, and also the one for our ICI customers in terms of water-saving initiatives that they can do and get rebates on their water bill.
Anyone else? Counselor Mayberry?
A question and a comment, if I may. Question is, under the report, under, I think, source water protection, it says four septic inspections were expected to be completed in the community of Bright in '23, were postponed to '24 and then didn't get done in '24, remain to be done '25. If they're in a source water protected area, why aren't they being done?
Through the warden to Counselor Mayberry. We track them as part of the source protection plan with our risk management official inspector, but they're the area municipality's responsibility for the inspection. Now, having said that, they may not get to them one year, but we keep them recorded, and we continue to make contact to get those done. I do believe there was four that need to be done, as I recall in Blenheim, but there's more to be done in 2025. So, I think all of those will be done in 2025 for those ones, then in '26, I believe it's Norwich. So, we keep a track of them, but it's with the area municipality.
Anyone else? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Palmer, resolved that the recommendations contained in Report PW 2025-10 titled "2024 Drinking Water System Performance" be adopted.
Is there any discussion? Counselor Mayberry?
Well, I think since water is actually essential to life and good water is essential to good life, I just want to say thank you to all of the staff, and I say that very sincerely, that people across this county can go to bed, get up and drink a glass of water whenever they want, and know that it's safe. And I think that should be reassuring to everyone, and again, my sincere appreciation for all of the work of all the people that keep it that way. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, I would just, my only comment would be a quote from the report. Over 4,500 regulated bacteriological samples were collected with 17 samples being adverse, 0.38%. And of course, now the monitor goes to sleep. All adverse results were investigated, re-sampled, and cleared. Any other discussion before I call the vote? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.3.3 PW 2025-11 Managed Forest Plan Update 2024 Review and Operational Activity Forecast. Director Abercrombie, is there anything you want to highlight for council before I ask them for questions?
Thank you, Warden Ryan. So, this is the 2024, sorry, update on the Oxford County Forest Management Plan and includes the work that we were able to complete in 2024. So, the county actively manages its forest lands, not only for the timber production, but also for environmental sustainability and habitat preservation. So, in 2024, our initiatives included commercial and non-commercial tree harvesting across several tracts, including, that generated approximately $7,000 in revenue, as well as our tree planting efforts saw over 13,000 new seedlings established. We were also able to look after invasive species management cover on more than 30 hectares, and this will help protect and restore the natural ecosystem in those areas. So, happy to answer any questions council might have on the report.
Questions from council? Counselor Mayberry?
I apologize, I'm just looking for it again. Somewhere in the report, it talks about planting oak trees. I'm just wondering, we had any problems so far with oak wilt? I understand it's not in the area. I don't know, the conservation authorities can tell me otherwise, but we haven't yet, but apparently we will at some point. So, I guess I'm just worried about planting trees. Oak wilt takes all oak trees.
So, through the warden, our Woodlands Conservation Officer is, looks at different things, and he has not had any concerns with our tree plantings to date.
Anyone else? Counselor Atchoney?
Thank you through you, warden. I know in some municipalities, Woodstock, for example, when developments are happening, and I know they're happening in all of Oxford County, I know it doesn't exactly relate to this report, but I'm curious. In City of Woodstock has a three-to-one ratio for planting trees when one is cut down. Is there such a policy countywide? That would be, I don't recall reading any of that in this report at all. I'm just curious.
Through the warden, so our bylaw does not speak to any type of planting ratios like that. If the Woodlands finds out about some trees that have been removed, we look at what to reestablish the forest is necessary, but there is no hard three-to-one ratio in any bylaws.
Thank you. I didn't think so. I was just curious. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, warden. Moved by myself and seconded Counselor Mayberry, resolved that the recommendation contained in Report PW 2025-11 titled "Managed Forest Plan Update: 2024 Review and Operational Activity Forecast" be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. 11:47, we're surely not going to get done before lunch, so we will take lunch break now and come back at 12:20 on the dot as soon as Quorum's in the room because we've still got a lot to do.
12:20, I'll call the meeting back to order after lunch. Sorry. Yeah, it's kind of, I mean, after the morning we had, it's kind of like, round two? Anyway, I'm glad, I'm glad we can all laugh about it. Corporate Services, 8.4.1, CS 2025-05, addendum to 2024 Development Charge Background Study, and I will turn it over to Director Bougner if she has anything, oh. Anybody else want to take a shot? CAO Adley.
Let me just get to that report. Thank you, Warden, and obviously this is in, this report is before council day and follow-up to the presentation and public meeting at previous council with regards to the updated bylaw, development charge bylaw, and specific from the directions out of council in November of last year. Certainly if there's questions, the director is now here and myself can answer those for you.
Just to give you another minute to sit down then, everybody's a little bit goofy. So brace yourself, and I'll turn it over to you. Questions from Council on the Board? Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden, through you. I'd like to move the following motion, which the clerk has moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Tate. Whereas Section 10 for Development Charges Act 1997 states in part that council shall ensure that a part, development charge background studies are made available to the public at least 60 days prior to the passing of the development charge bylaw, and further that section 19 one of that act in part states that 19.1, section 10 to 11 apply with any necessary, with necessary modifications to an amendment to a development charge bylaw. And whereas the addendum to the 2024 Development Charge Background Study for Public Circulation and Common dated January 22, 2025, which is dated January 2, 2025, which is 34 days from February 26, 2025, therefore council defer consideration of either 8.4.1 to attain a legal opinion on if the notice requirements contained in section 10, 4, and 19.1 of Development Charges Act 1997, SO 1997 C 27, have met the, have been met in regards to the addendum to the 2024 Development Charge Background Study dated January 22, 2025.
Deputy Warden Petrie, is the mover, do you wish to speak to that?
Yes, so certainly had some discussions, but it does state in the, the act that council shall ensure that the, is made, that the item is made available for 60 days. And so I have questions of that still, you know, there's, there's differences of opinion. But I feel that this is the time for due diligence to make sure we do, are following the legislation and have that opportunity. You know, it's, it's put in there for a reason, and I, I'm more than happy, this is just more of a question of clarification, more than happy either way it goes, but I think that it's an important question and should be answered.
Counselor Tate is the second here. Any other discussion? I have a question for staff then, does our staff, what's staff's opinion on whether we've met the legislative requirement for a notice?
Through the warden and members of council, and in fact, there's several sections of the Development Charges Act that makes reference to the process and the process that Counselor Petrie, or Deputy Warden Petrie was referring to is in regards to establishing a new background study and then a bylaw that's required for the passing of that background study. So our process is a little bit different than that, in that, or at least this particular process, in that the by, the background study was approved by council within one year. So it was approved and became effective in June of last year. So we still, we have the liberty through the Development Charges Act then to open up and amend the background study and/or the bylaw. And, and so that's effectively what we were directed to do by council in November of last year as we were going through the 2025 business plan budget process. And so what's before you today is asking for council to consider what was presented at the public meeting on February the 12th. Under the provisions of the municipal act, section 12, 11 and 12, basically says that you have at least 20 days notice of the meeting, so that's the public meeting that was held on, on February the 12th, in which we met that requirement, and ensure that the proposed bylaw and the background study are made available to the public at least two weeks prior to the meeting, or if there is more than one meeting prior to the first meeting. So our first public meeting was held on February the, the 12th. So we have met the requirements of the municipal act, or sorry, the Development Charges Act in that regards. So what is before council today then is to adopt the assumptions contained in the background study. So that's an, adopt those addendums to the background study. So we're not, we didn't open up the entire background study and review it, we're only amending it based on council's direction. And then, and part of that process too, we updated some capital projects, so we're seeking council's approval of those capital project listings that are part of the addendum, as well as the calculations then that result from those addendum changes. And then determine that there's no further public meetings required based on the feedback and the information that we received from those that attended the public meeting. We haven't heard any subsequent information has been brought forward from, from members that are developers within the community. So we're recommending in this report that another public meeting is not recommended. However, council must make that determination. Once that's done then, a development charge as amended can be brought back to council for consideration, and that is on today's agenda as well. If there's any questions, we can entertain those now.
Deputy Warden.
Thank you, and I 100% agree with all the information the Director of Corporate Services provided there. We are not, I 100% agree that we met the notice requirements of the public meeting portion of it under section 12, and that we are not opening up the development charges background study. We did treat that within a year, but what we are doing is amending, and there is an amendment to that, that's the document that is, that was referred to in the motion where it says that the, you know, addendum to the 2024 Development Charge Background Study for Public Circulation and Common, January 2, 2025, that document contained on Speak Up Oxford is an amendment, and under section 19.1, so section four says the background study needs to be available for 60 days before passing a development bylaw. 19.1 states section 10 through 18 apply with necessary modifications, i.e. wording changes, to an amendment of a development charge bylaw. And so that's the only thing where I, I, I want to make sure that we are, I personally feel that we have not met those requirements because I feel that it does meet, we're not opening up the background study, but an amendment is the same, treated the same as a background study, and therefore it doesn't, it, there's no, I can't find an out on it unless it is a decision of the tribunal that you don't have to have a notice for, or if you're just extending the bylaw, the bylaw the date's coming from. So again, it does say that the council shall ensure, so that's why I bring this forward. I appreciate staff's assistance in this and answering the questions that I put forward. I just feel that I'd like to have a definitive answer on this, on this item if we could, and yeah, I'll leave it there.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Warden. Just to clarify that we have consulted with our consultant that we used for the development of the background study and the bylaws, one that we've been used, been using for a number of years and has been supporting other municipalities for a couple of decades now. And basically they're saying that as the background study is still valid, you're within the one-year period, the requirement to prepare the study and post it 60 days in advance of the bylaw has been met the first time around. And then we've held a public meeting now in accordance with the act, and the notice of, and then of course, after the bylaws pass, we have to provide notice of, of the, an appeal process.
Deputy Warden.
Just a question through, through you, Warden. How do they, how does the, how is the section 19.1 that says that 10 through 18 apply to amendments get dealt with in that, in that scenario? And that's really the thing, I agree 100% that the background study is within the one year, it's not being reconsidered, but an amendment is to it. And 19.1 says that sections 10 through 18 apply to an amendment. I guess that, that's my, that's my sticking point, and that's the question I have is, we are doing amendment, how does it not apply in that situation?
May Warden through you, and I would say, you know, we have not, as you mentioned, sought a legal opinion on it, and we are relying on the consultation and feedback from Watson and Associates, the consultant who worked on this, that we do meet that obligation through the prior study posting. So again, to answer, you know, specifically the detail of that, you know, the, like I said, we are relying on the advice of the consultant for that.
Thank you, through you, Warden. I hope this is kind of appropriate, but I'm still questioning the problem of the DC charges. And I'm wondering, through to Mr. Adley, or through to the CAO, could, do you know if the consultant has considered the impacts of the tariffs, and would that change any of the recommendations in that report? I mean, it does sound like they're coming next week, and I'm just...
So I think, given the motion that's on the floor...
Yeah, that's why I'm wondering.
Yeah, it's iffy, but I'm going to rule, and you know, feel free to challenge me, that that's not a relevant question for specifically the motion. It is to the report, but not for the motion that's on the floor to deal with the report. Because the motion on the floor is to, it doesn't say to adopt the report, it says to get a legal opinion, I'm paraphrasing.
So I guess maybe I'll relate that, because, and I understand before saying that, is there a scenario here where we should be talking to the consultant again and maybe getting a legal opinion to make sure things haven't changed as far as this report, if I can ask that question?
Through you, Warden. So I would suggest that the tariffs would not specifically impact with regards to the Development Charges Act on the timelines and what's being brought forward by this motion. The consultant as well did not go back and redo any of the things related to the original background study outside of the items that counsel had put forward. So I would say, no, the tariff consideration was not part of their process in reviewing that, only the items that we took back to them for review as part of counsel's previous direction.
Counselor Gilvezzi.
Nothing right now, because I just don't, I don't feel it's an appropriate question for this time. Thank you.
Anyone else? I can ask the clerk to read it again, since everybody doesn't have it until now. I can ask the clerk to read it again, and then I'll call the question.
Thank you, Warden. Whereas Section 10.4 of the Development Charges Act 1997 states in part that the counsel shall ensure that a development charge background study is made available to the public at least 60 days prior to the passing of the development charge bylaw. And further, that Section 19.1 of that act states in part that 19.1, Sections 10 to 18, apply with the necessary modifications to an amendment to a development charge bylaw. And whereas the addendum to the 2024 Development Charge Background Study for Public Circulation in Common is dated January 22, 2025, which is 34 days from February 26, 2025, therefore counsel defer consideration of Item 8.4.1 to obtain legal opinion if the notice requirements contained in Section 10.4 and 19.1 of the Development Charges Act 1997 have been met in regards to the addendum to the 2024 Development Charge Background Study dated January 22, 2025.
Any other discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? Hold on. Motion is defeated. On a tie. Counselor Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Palmer. Result, recommendations contained in Report CS 202505 titled "Addendum to 2024 Development Charges Background Study Be Adopted."
Counselor Mayberry is the mover. Do you wish to speak to that?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Who was the seconder? Counselor Palmer is the seconder.
I will agree with Counselor Mayberry.
Any other discussion? Deputy Warden Petrie, then, Counselor Accione.
Thank you very much. I can't support this, not for mentioning the other reasons that were, you know, the previous motion, but also that I think this is the wrong time for this change. Much has been changed since that motion was brought forward. You know, when we look at economic development, stability plays a major piece in this, in that counsel made a decision in 2024, they've asked for that decision to be changed. But I think that, you know, what we've seen out of the instability coming from south of the border, I hate to say it, but this is exactly the kind of problem we have with what Mr. Trump is doing with policies, is constant change and causing instability within our industrial sector. I just got an email this morning that two companies that I know that were looking to expand are now laying off people because of the impacts of what is going on. We already charge industrial properties 2.63 to 1 on the tax ratio. They pay more than their fair share. I think at this point, we need to do everything we can to not only support the customers that we have, but try to incentivize any new development within the community. The other issue I have is that this is the exact type of development we want to have happen, the more square footage, the better, because we can tax it. That's our business's taxation. What we're not doing is, we're allowing others that create issues off the hook. Gravel pits, trucking firms, they don't build anything, and yet we don't charge them DCs, we can't. They cause traffic concerns, and we're penalizing the people that will pay the taxes. They will pay their fair share of these increased costs of exemptions themselves because they pay 2.63 to 1. I'm going to give an example of a recent development in Ingersoll that they looked at 41 municipalities where to invest. They chose Ingersoll, and I can guarantee you, because we've heard it, that development charge exemption was a major proportion of this, a major decision-making in this factor, because as others have stated, there has been other costs coming down the 401 that makes it more expensive here. We need to have the most incentive possible. Now, they were planning on being DC exempt. They may still be, because, but if they don't make a planning decision, if they make a planning decision, they have to tweak their site plan or anything, it's a million-dollar swing from their operations standpoint. They cannot finance those costs. They cannot do it. There's not a capital cost, so that has to be cash upfront. These is, I would rather, we cannot raise the tax ratio, but we have it at a super-high rate as it is. The government ratio is set at 1.1. You can go towards that, but you can't go away from anymore. They can finance those costs through operational costs, and we can benefit from them. We are not going to see the development, we got told this, and it's a true cost to people. This is a million dollars in real money that could happen from one day to the next. That company may not develop now, if that's the case. It may not be, they may go, okay, well, we're not, we're just going to hand the land back, and we're going to go someplace else. We have a changed timeframe from where this was. We want growth, we want density, we want that stuff, but these are the things that keep us ticking. I think it's well worth the cost to pay from the exemption standpoint when we have the tax ratio coming in to offset that, and we need to support any sort of development we're going to get because we're going to go backwards. And so I can't support this. I've been very clear with that before, it's no big surprise. I think that we need to show stability. The people who are, you know, in our decision-making and our planning, we have a regular retirement period to review these things. Yes, we're going to see exemptions. The other thing is, like I said earlier, is that we're not going to see the effects of these, if we take these off, if someone has a site plan or an application in, they got 18 months. So that 18-month period is going to be a timeframe where there's still going to be exemptions, it's still going to be on the budget to do those things. And I really just don't want anything that's going to stop someone from looking in Oxford County to say, this is the right place to do business with the great people that we have working here. We've got more people going on unemployment as we speak. They need jobs. We just approved, how many housing developments did we just approve today? A thousand? Where are they going to work? We need to incentivize these jobs, you know, it's just, I just can't support where we're going with this. I think we need to stay the course and get some stability back, and so we can make a change that we know is going to, how it's going to affect us. And I'll leave it there.
Counselor Accione.
Thank you, through you, Warden. I'm going to wholeheartedly agree here that Deputy Warden, and I normally do support development charges. I think growth should pay for growth. The problem is, in this climate, where we know things are coming and the job market is in jeopardy, why are we doing something right now when we don't necessarily have to? The short-term gain for a DC charge when we're no longer going to be on their list of being looked at to build here kind of puts us out of the game. Then what have we gained? The taxes we gain on a regular basis far out cost what that initial DC charge was in combined water, wastewater, and taxes to all our municipalities. I'd just be really cautionary of adding any more undue burdens to any Canadian business or any business that is here in Oxford County. We want to continue to be on their list, we want them to keep looking here in Oxford County to build. And again, with, it sounds like next week we are going to have the tariffs to deal with, and it's causing quite a shockwave amongst business owners and developers already, and I'm really fearful. I think, let's pause things and see the total effect. In fact, I would love to see what the consultant would say with this new information now, to see if there'd be any justification at all in their minds. Thank you.
Question from myself. If we were to pause this and not implement this, if I remember correctly, the impact on the tax levy was 4-point-something percent as an estimate, would that require an interim tax levy adjustment if we were to pause this?
Jen Lovelie, our manager of capital planning, is going to come up and speak to how the budget was adjusted accordingly.
So through the warden, so we did remove the implications from the industrial exemptions from the budget. So should we still have some that are subject to the freeze period, or that if this decision is altered, those would have to be funded by another means? This could be, the county's surplus would then be funding it. As we know, the reserve policy has the surplus go to several capital reserves to help with that gap. So that would put an additional strain there. If the county is in a deficit at the end of the year as a result of the industrial exemptions that would then come through, we'd have to look at how that's funded, through what reserves would we then fund that?
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Tate.
Just through the chair, so further that, but if there's no, if there's no development, then there's no, nothing on us, correct?
Correct. Equally, there would be no exemptions if there's no development.
Okay. So just further to the comments that were made, I have a client, it's a very large manufacturer, and they were doing an addition. Now everything's on hold because they're waiting for the tariffs, and if the tariff's gone, they're probably going to move everything. So I agree, I think we're really in uncertain times, and I think a lot of people's jobs are at stake. So putting it on hold for a short time, I think, is reasonable.
Anyone else? Counselor Gilvezzi.
Thank you, Warden. I would tend to agree. March 4th is going to be a big day for this country. I've got a lot of manufacturers that are very concerned, and I think everyone, number one, I think it's going to be extremely difficult to sell land, investment land in Canada at all. It's going to be a tough job for our economic development officers to move land, because I don't know who's going to invest with tariffs coming on the 4th. So I think that we've got maybe some time to play with, that we could defer this until we're, we can kind of see the impacts of what's going to happen after March 4th.
Counselor Mayberry, and then, did you have your hand up, Counselor Palmer, or no? No, Counselor Mayberry, and then Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden. I guess, first of all, I'm always concerned when we play the tariff card as though it's only going to impact us, it impacts everybody across the country. And so the impact on Oxford is no different than the impact in Middlesex, or York, or Peel, or anywhere else, right? So I think, I think there's going to be an impact from tariff, but I think it's kind of universal. So I don't think that that becomes the biggest issue. I think the issue really is, does this discourage industrial development? And the reality is, the reason they're coming to Oxford County is because it's the next cheapest place to be, and that's where they want to go, or it's the closest place. And quite frankly, with the 401, 403, 402 corridor, we're close to everywhere. So I'm not even sure I'm as concerned about that. The other part that worries me just a little bit is that we continue down this road that the only, the only way for us to be sustainable is that we continuously grow, that growth has to happen. And the reality is that most people don't actually care about growth, what they care about is their own prosperity and security. And so I would suggest that while we're growth-focused, I think we might want to take a better look, and this is where I think the conversation around how do we deal with tariffs should be focused on, is not how do we grow, but how do we stay prosperous?
Anyone else? Deputy Warden Petrie.
Yeah, thank you, Warden, through you. I would be supportive, I got to be honest, the only thing I'm not supportive of on this is the industrial side of things, the industrial exemption. I understand the update, like staff had better information to put in there, so I'm supportive of accepting that into the DC study. I think that's important, and maybe needs to be done on an updated basis, at a yearly basis or whatever, to give that more updated, but I'll leave that to staff for recommendation. I think that, for the reasons that Counselor Mayberry stated, people do look at Oxford. We have an excellent workforce, but, and we have excellent location, but that is not the only thing. We know that companies look here because we have an economic advantage to come here and actually put us over the edge where others are competing. And this is something that we do have right now that does make a difference. To get rid of that is definitely not, it's not going to put us on even footing, it's going to put us down the chain more, because we don't have it now. We don't, we have an exemption now, we're going to take that away, and then we're not going to be on equal footing where we were. We're actually putting our, we're literally putting ourselves at a disadvantage. The times, I don't think we can ignore the times, like I don't, I didn't agree with it before, before the times happened, but at the same time, it's like, it is going to be extremely difficult to find anybody who's willing to invest anywhere. I think we need to give the tools available. Let's face it, if it doesn't happen, there's no exemptions. And if it, and if it does happen with that, then, sorry, if we implement the, take away the exemptions, if no business happens, we don't get the revenue either, and we don't get taxes. Oxford County has the highest ratio of industrial-commercial offsetting taxes to residential anywhere in Canada. This is, you talk about prosperity, this is what causes it. It allows us to have a farm rate ratio that is .20 and support those agricultural businesses because we have those, and we have that industrial growth that helps make life affordable, and those great opportunities to go, great jobs to have, make sure that our residents are prosperous. Those are at threat right now. Any tool we can put out there, I'm all for, because we need to make sure we maintain, and I'd love to see it grow, but it's going to be hard. It's a different world than it was 2024. These are what makes us prosperous in Oxford County. We all work together. This is the type of development, even over residential, that we want, because residential drives service, industrial pays for that, and it allows us to support our agricultural community and keep that going. I wish we could put huge development charge on every truck that went down the highway. We can't do that, and that's, you know, look at the problems that you have in Zora and with gravel trucks, they are causing havoc to roads. You cannot, you can't tax them, you can't put DCs on them, but they're causing those things. These ones are, when you look at an industrial property, it is located usually through the major transportation network. It wants to get on the highway and go, there's very little impact there. We don't need them, I'll, I could go on for here, I won't. I'll leave the floor, and I apologize to the warden for rambling. I just can't support this.
Counselor Peterson. Then Counselor Accione, then Counselor Sheik.
Yeah, just for some clarity, I guess, and I know the warden, you kind of touched on it a little bit. When we discussed this before, was this not discussed at budget time? Because I'm kind of looking at it going, this is really like, like, I know we can't, I don't know how you do this, but we can't change the levy, the budget, the whole nine yards. Because I know personally, for me, if a four-plus percent was going to be added to that levy at budget time, there might have been a change in the way I voted for other things at that budget time. So that's why I'm just kind of finding this hard to get, because it definitely is going to change. get, because it definitely is going to change. If not the budget this year, I definitely could add that four-point-whatever percent it was. So that's why I just, I'm kind of finding it hard to, to, that this discussion is coming up when our budget and everything's already approved.
I think, I'll attempt to answer it, and then I'll see if staff want to add anything to it. But I think that procedurally, this is, this report is an outcome of the decisions that council made before. And while it does directly affect budget and levy, because as you say, that did inform budget deliberations, this, this report from staff has to come back as a result of the previous decisions made of council. But that does not, I am not disagreeing, because it's factually incorrect to say that it does not impact those things. It does. I don't know if you want to...
Through you, Warden. Yeah, I would say that's correct. The, the motion was made outside of the budget meetings itself to make these changes to the development charge bylaw. However, if you recall, in the draft budget, there was, staff had presented the DC charge exemption to be funded through levy. And as a result of that motion, there was a budget adjustment that then impacted the budget by reducing it by, I believe around 4.7 percent was what the amount was.
Counselor Atchoni, then Counselor Shaefer.
Thank you. I'm wondering if I could make a motion to defer and ask for comments from our economic development teams here in Oxford County, as well as the consultant that did the initial study, to come back with the relative information now of what the tariffs and everything could do. Because again, if they're not coming to Oxford County, then we're not going to get those DC charges, but we're also not going to get those taxes and water fees and everything else. So I think there's a huge picture here at risk. The climate has definitely changed, and is going to change for the next little while, for sure.
Counselor Shaefer.
Thank you, Warden. Through you. I think we're selling ourselves short that we have to waive development charges to attract industrial businesses to this area. We've got a lot to offer. And you know what? I mean, yeah, there's no free garbage bag, but there's no free development charges either. Somebody's got to pay it. So, you know, delaying it for these tariffs, which can't, which may or may not come, and, and all those things, I don't agree with that. We don't know the future, but I really don't think we need to be providing an exemption for, for, for industrial. Thank you.
Counselor Tate?
Through the chair, and I agree with those comments. People come here because our land is way cheaper. It's not the, because we waive DC charges. I think my only issue was just to see what the consultant had, anything to add. I wasn't voting to not have them, just, I just wanted the information. That was it.
Anyone else? Couple comments. I think, first, I have to start with, I think the suggestion that anybody in this room is anything like Trump is, I'm trying to be careful with what I want to say versus what I'm going to say, wide of the mark. He's a whack job. He's a buffoon, and he's a tyrant. And I think we're all better than that. The next thing I would say is, I think that, you know, there is something to be said for policy stability. I definitely agree. But at the same time, I don't think that should ever prevent us from changing our minds on policy if we think it's a good policy change to have, right? And I think that's what we're doing. We followed all of our staff's recommendations and the, you know, legislative requirements for the timeline. We're doing this as the way it's supposed to be done. I think also, you know, the fact that a developer doesn't get a development charge exemption is not penalizing them, I think. I know they would like to have the exemption, but it is, to be clear, an exemption. I don't think it's really fair to characterize anybody not getting an exemption as a penalty. Getting the exemption is a benefit, not a penalty that you don't get the exemption. And the other thing I would say is, and I had this conversation with, with one developer yesterday, that when council made this decision, part of the decisions that it made in the resolution that it passed, was that there were services that our residents are not getting adequately that is deteriorating their quality of life. And those services are not funded by the municipal property tax bill primarily. Some of them are, housing, but most of the ones that our residents are experiencing in poor quality of life is access to primary health care, children in portables instead of in a building, you know, housing and encampments, which is, which is partially municipally funded, but largely, and certainly to a larger extent, should be funded by the provincial and federal government. And us attacking, attracting more property tax is not going to address those issues. It will help us to address others, but it's not going to get anybody a doctor. It's not going to build a portable. So I think if we, for me, all the reasons that have been, that have been stated are all the same ones that we debated when we debated this the first time. And I think, you know, as Counselor Shaefer said, you know, maybe the tariffs come on Monday, maybe they don't, maybe they're big, maybe they're small. Again, he's a whack job and a buffoon, and nobody knows what he's going to do. I think people are going to continue to invest in Oxford County. And I think, if we remember as well, certainly part of my intention in the motion at the time, and what I spoke to at the time when I brought it, was part of the intention was to slow growth and to not tax people to incentivize growth that we are not growing healthier under. So for all those reasons, I think I'm very much in support of the recommend, of the motion on the floor and the recommendations in the report, and we'll be voting in favor of it. Anybody else before I call the question? Deputy Warden?
Ask for a recorded vote. And you can say it doesn't matter, and it's not, it is, these people are making calculated decisions on a spreadsheet to say where is the best place to invest, and how do they make that decision. These, regardless if there's any tariffs, it is going to have, it is already having an effect on our community. To say slow growth and then pass applications to include like over a thousand units is hypocrisy at its best. This is growth that pays for itself and pays for those services that those residents are going to need. And it pays, it pays, it pays for itself well over what it contributes. We need this type of development. We're not going to have this type of development. And I'll leave it there, but I would like to press a recorded vote.
Counselor Gilvezzi?
Thank you. I have to say, like, I was in support of this and still kind of am, like, really torn on this issue, just because I think the landscape's changed. But overall, when you look, like, I know in the Tillsimer area, land, land does self, I think the new industrial lands around 250,000 an acre. And I think we've seen land in Brant go for a million an acre. And I do believe Brant has DC charges as well. And then it's a way, this is DC charges exemptions are having residents support and obviously offset those costs. And that's not obviously fair to residents. But I do see the side where it's a tool in the kit, right? You know, that our economic development officers can go back and say, hey, you know, but don't locate there because we've got the exemption here. But everybody has to pay for it. That's the bottom line. So, and I know that my economic development committee and economic development officer don't support it, but I don't see how, at this point in time, we could actually really turn this around and say, hey, you know what, we got to look at, we look at opening the budget and putting this back on the, on the tax base. So, decision was made at a different time. Things have changed, but we don't necessarily have control over it, unfortunately.
Anyone else? Counselor Atchoni?
Yes, thank you, Warden. Through you. Then can I make a motion to defer and ask for a report?
You can.
If I have a second or on that to see what the climate?
I need it in writing to the clerk with a mover and a second.
Send that right now.
I do want to respond. I think that approving a thousand units, when there is 160 people on a by-name list identified, self-identified as homeless, is absolutely not hypocrisy. It is absolutely responsible and consistent with good land use planning and our strategic plan, and not expressly hypocritical. Do we have a motion to the clerk?
I'm just sending it off right now. Thank you. Sorry for the delay there. I'm just simply got here, and I'm open to some ideas. We want to change this slightly, but a motion to defer item CS 2025-05 to ask for feedback from economic development teams here in Oxford County, and ask for a report from the consultant, see what impacts tariffs will have on Oxford County, and further what financial impacts can be expected.
And who was your second?
Counselor Gilvezzi.
As the mover of the motion to defer, do you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you. Again, just for that and what I've already mentioned, I think the climate has changed even from a few months ago. I'd really love to hear from our economic development teams. I know the ones I've spoken to are quite worried about what the impacts are going to be. Speaking with local businesses here already, and the amount of pauses we've had in this last month and a half since all this nonsense has started, this is kind of their fears that could happen, and I know there's going to be economic downfall to this.
Sure, thank you, Warden. Yeah, I definitely agree with this, just because I think we need to take a second glance. As I said, I was really torn on it, don't want to put it back on the rate pairs. But honestly, I feel investment is really going to slow. So I don't think it'll have too much of a detrimental, detrimental impact in the immediate interim on, on the budget. So I would like to just hear, you know, has it changed? Is it going to affect us? And I think, I think we'll probably know something a lot better in a month, quite frankly.
Anyone else? Counselor Martin?
Could I just ask a question then on a deferral? Do you have a timeline in mind on, on expecting something back? Or do staff have a timeline of, is this something that comes back in two weeks, a month, six weeks? I'm just curious if that's a part of the thinking.
Through you, Warden. Given that we will have to engage the consultant on, on this work, we'll have to follow up with them on their availability and timeframe to that, as well as what that scope potentially looks like for them. You know, I do perceive it'll be difficult for them to come up with kind of economic impacts based on potential of, and may even take, you know, months of experience under tariffs before they could make a adequate estimation of what that impact could be.
Anyone else? Counselor Shaefer?
Thank you, Warden. Through you. I think if we're going to ask the consultant to tell us the impact of tariffs, we'll be lucky to get a report in this term of council. I mean, which day are you asking me that as of? Because that's what it is. And are you talking about, okay, what's the Canadian response going to be to the tariffs? Because that's a big part of it. It's not just coming one way. So I think it's an impractical request.
Just, I think it specifically says in the procedural bylaw somewhere that I'm supposed to notify council of developments. And I've just been informed that apparently President Trump is pushing off the tariffs until sometime in April. I'm not sure, again, because he is a, what did I say before? Whack job and a buffoon. I'm not sure what kind of language he exactly used to say that, and whether any of us can bank on that or not. But apparently, he has just said that. So just particularly relevant to what we're talking about now, so there you go. I think it was Counselor Martin, and I can't remember who then.
So Mr. Adley, then, could I clarify what I think I heard you just say? If we go back to the consultant, I am assuming that is at an additional cost to the previously arranged contract with them.
Through you, Warden. Yes, I'm assuming that they will have to, will have to develop a scope with them, and then they would be able to provide us not only the costing, but the timeline to complete the work.
Counselor Tate?
Through the chair, and just a thought, because honestly, I think what's going on with the tariffs, he's just trolling the liberals, so maybe he will put it off. So if we pass this and did the DCs at a future time, future councils, they can always reverse it if they find it's an issue, correct?
Through you, Warden, again. Yeah, absolutely. The council could decide to do that. The process would obviously vary depending on the timeline from the original study, and that's why the, the current opportunity is within that one-year timeframe for an amendment. Greater than that, we would have to redo study, but it still could be accomplished.
Deputy Warden?
Thank you, Warden, too. I appreciate where Counselor Atchoni is coming from, and I agree that that information, you know, I certainly talked. I think that we have economic development officers, and we've, we've talked to them. So we know, I think that practically, I don't know if that's going to change the, you know, change the votes around the table. And I agree that, you know, it's a drastically swaying situation out there. I'm prepared just to vote today and let, you know, let it, let it settle. And I think that, you know, I believe what I believe, and we'll see, I think we'll see what happens in the economy. But I think that it's, it's a really hard one to get that report back. But you can talk to any economic developers. Feel free to reach out to, I'm going to say, reach out to Ingraham's staff. I'm sure the rest, like, they're, they're available. If anybody wants to talk to them, they always have, you know, everybody has opinions or experience, I wouldn't say opinions, experience around the table. And, yeah, I don't know. I just don't, I don't know if, I don't want to support it, but I don't know. It's going to make a difference.
Anyone else? Yeah, I'm not going to support a motion to defer this. I think, without a doubt, could the decision to do this be wrong? Absolutely. Every decision we make could be wrong. Somebody, I'm hoping genuinely, for every single policy that I've ever passed and submitted in government, that somebody in the future will say, what an idiot that guy was, I got a better idea. That's the nature of the job that we do. But I think that we've considered the pros and cons here. I think I, I'm pretty confident that if we asked any economic development officer in the context of their job, they would say, DC exemption's good, because it helps me to do more economic development. And, and that would be their job, and they would be right in the context of their job. To me, the context of this decision for council wasn't, are DC exemptions an economic development incentive? Without a doubt, they are. The, the reason the council took this decision was that we were considering not incentivizing that development, because we felt that our community was struggling with the rate of growth that we had. So to me, I'm not in favor of deferring this. I don't think, in my opinion, I mean, we've had time for anybody to tell us. We had, we literally had a public comment at the last council meeting. Anybody could have told us anything. And we did hear from some developers. So I, I think we have, for me, I have the information that I need to make this decision, and I'm in favor of the motion, not in favor of the motion on the floor to defer, but in favor of the previous motion. Anybody else before I call the question? And I'm going to get the clerk to read the motion to defer again, just to be clear. Counselor Atchoni?
I'll withdraw that motion to defer. So we can vote on that.
Second or agrees. So, again, we've been through this before. Our procedural bylaw is actually silent on whether you have the ability to do that or not. My judgment would be that if the mover and the second or agree to withdraw, and nobody's objecting to withdrawing it, that I'm going to allow it to be withdrawn. I'm not seeing anybody objecting, so it's withdrawn. So now we return to the motion on the floor, which was moved by Mayberry, and I can't remember who it was seconded by, Palmer, I think, resolved that the recommendations contained in report CS 2025-05 titled Addendum to 2024 Development Charge Background Study Be Adopted. That is the motion on the floor. Does anybody wish to speak to that before I call the question?
Request for a recorded vote.
Oh, there was a request for a recorded vote, actually, too. Counselor Tate?
Yes, through the chair. So we can change it within a year if we find there's an issue. But I will say, I agree with Counselor Shaefer. People are coming here because of the cost of our land, not because of DCs. I don't think that has an effect. So if we find that has a problem, we do have that window of a year, correct?
Through you, Warden. A year from the background study, so, yep.
Which was June, correct?
June.
Sorry?
April 12th.
April 12th, 2024. So you got two months, well, month and a half.
Yeah.
Any other discussion before I ask the clerk to call the question? All right, turn it over to you.
Recorded vote requested by Deputy Warden Petrie. Counselor Mayberry?
Yes.
Counselor Palmer? Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Counselor Acioni?
No.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Warden Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Schaefer?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Tate?
No.
Counselor Gilvezzi?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Petrie?
No.
That's carried. Three, seven-three.
That's carried. Seven-three. So, 8.4.2, CS 2025-06, Payroll Scheduling and Human Resources Software. Director Brugner, is there anything you want to highlight for council before I ask them for questions?
Yes, thank you, Warden. So, in 2024, as business plan and budget, council approved a project for replacement of our current payroll and scheduling software. Scheduling software was coming to end of life at the end of 2025, so we needed to get moving on making plans for having particularly the scheduling software replaced, as well as we had identified a number of inadequacies in our payroll system that, you know, is largely outdated. Therefore, it was incorporated in that project. So that scope of project was approved by council in 2024. However, in working through the process, searching out an application, there was a group of staff of on-premise expertise brought together, so those the stakeholders, HR was brought in. And the original scope of the scheduling software was predominantly the regular business units, not the 24/7 operations such as Woodingford Lodge and Paramedic Services. So those scheduling systems are much different. They're much more robust for accommodating the needs of those collective agreements, as well as the 24/7 operations. So that said, they were still invited to participate in reviewing potential solutions to what was approved by council in 2024. Throughout that process, it was identified that there were many more inefficiencies in effectiveness in terms of how our human resource investments are managed within the software applications, all being somewhat disparate. So the interfaces between those, there's, it's not as seamless as it should be or could be using upgraded technology. So we are doing a lot of manual entries that are creating a lot of errors and wasting of time. So with that said, going through this process, staff have identified that the human resources application, the HRIS system, they're looking for upgrading that as well to fully integrate with whatever payroll and scheduling software we were to adopt. So, and just since this process had started, we've been since informed that Great Plains, our financial application, is coming to end of life within a few years. And that was implemented in 2020 by the county and all of the area municipalities. So that application, and again, it's a platform, it's one module within a platform where there can be many other integrated modules, but it's lasted us 25 years. So what we're looking at now, we have expanded the scope of this project, or at least we're seeking council's approval to expand the scope of this project to address all those other inefficiencies that have arisen over that 25-year period and set us up well for the future. So in terms of any additional details of this project, Carolyn King, our Senior Manager of Financial Services, as well as Amy Smith, our Director of Human Resources, who've been participating on that expert team, can address any of those questions for you.
Questions from council on the report. Counsel Martin.
Thank you, Warden Ryan. For a $560,000 investment, can you financially quantify what operational efficiencies might look like? What is the return on that investment? Is it six months saving, a year saving, two years, 10 years? How quickly do we start to see those efficiencies add up as savings?
Sorry about that. So we have the IT savings. We also, Great Plains is a hosted software, so our IT staff have to maintain any of the issues that happen. They're reaching out to our support system, entering support tickets, managing the system when something goes wrong. So we're going to save the savings there. We also have errors, as Lynn had alluded to. We have a lot of errors that happen because the systems don't directly communicate to each other. We're doing lots of checks and balances to make sure we're catching those errors, but those checks and balances are minimal. So this will be a great system for having, and also one system together as one. So the employee experience right now, if they want to access their HR information, they have to go to one portal. If they want to access their scheduling information, they have to go to another portal. They don't have access to their payroll information. So this system is to bring everything all together into one experience that will be streamlined for the employees, so they get better communication, they get all their information at once. And we're also looking at better data. So right now, because our systems are all disjointed, it's very difficult to get one report to prepare for the ministry. So we're downloading Excel here, here, combining it together. Excel's prone to errors. If you have a formula error or if it crashes, it's just very hard to get that real-time data into the manager's hands. So with this system, we're expecting that managers have access to any trends in overtime or sick time, or trends that they can look at minimizing cost control. So I know I'm rambling on about all the different savings, but it's very difficult to say it's going to save us X amount of dollars or pay back right away. I think it's important to highlight that the overages in the budget is a one-time cost. It's within our base budget ongoing cost of the software. This one-time investment is to implement it, so.
Anyone else? Counsel Mayberry.
I just wonder, is there an annual cost to this software? Are we paying a licensing fee every year?
Absolutely is, and that's within our base budget. So that was part of the new initiative report. So the ongoing cost, so if you're looking at the table on page three, so the base budget cost is outlined there, and there's a subtotal. So that's the ongoing cost that's included in our budget.
The $185,000 annual.
That's correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Counsel Martin.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Schaefer, resolved that the recommendation contained in report CS 2025-06 titled "Payroll Scheduling and Human Resource Software Be Adopted."
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.4.3, CS 2025-07, Council Remuneration and Expenses 2024. Director Brugner, is there anything you want to highlight for council there?
No, I have nothing further, thanks.
Any questions on how much you got paid? Counsel Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Tate, resolved that the recommendations contained in report CS 2025-07 titled "Council Remuneration and Expenses 2024 Be Adopted."
Any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.4.4, CS 2025-08, Investment Activity Report and Policy Review 2024. Director Brugner, is there anything you want to highlight there?
I have nothing further to add, thank you.
Questions from council. Counsel Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Palmer, resolved that the recommendation contained in report CS 2025-08 titled "Investment Activity Report and Policy Review 2024 Be Adopted."
Is there any discussion? The only comment I would make is, pretty good report, pretty good return on investment. Who knows what's going to happen now, but so far, so good. I think it's good to know that the money we have in the bank is making us money is always a good thing. Any other discussion before I call the question? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. No unfinished business. Any motions? Notice of motion, Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you very much, Warden, through you. Everybody comfy?
You're the one who needs to take a breath.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Mayberry. Whereas a living wage is the hourly wage an individual needs to earn a basic, afford a basic expenses and participate in their community, and whereas, for example, Ontario Living Wage Network has calculated the 2024 living wage for London Elgin Oxford was $19.50 an hour, and whereas Oxford County has seen the effects of affordability on residents, including our own employees, and whereas one of the main contributors to affordability is a person's ability to afford the increased costs of goods and services, and whereas Oxford County, Oxford municipalities have committed to a Safe and Well Oxford Community Safety and Well-Being Plan, which prioritizes social development and risk prevention and mitigation strategies with a focus on cases, on causes. By proactively implementing evidence-based situational measures, policies, and programs to reduce priority risk to community safety and well-being, we can improve outcomes and reduce crime, victimization, and harm. And whereas Southwest Public Health has identified a living wage as a tool to address social detriments of health, and as a result, become a living wage employer, therefore be it resolved that staff return a report on the feasibility of budget and tax implications of Oxford County becoming a living wage employer.
Deputy Warden Petrie is the mover. Do you wish to speak to that?
I'm sure you'll have some comments on this, Warden, so I'll turn it over to you. But the only thing I'll say is that I would highly doubt that this would be too much of a burden on our budget, as I believe the vast majority, it'd be nice to be able to say that we are, because I think we are. And so it's probably well within the, like, very close, if not there. I think it's an easy thing to do and say that we are one, so I can fully, obviously, support that.
Counsel Mayberry is the secondor.
I support the concept that people need to make a decent living wage so that they can survive in our communities. And so I think this is a kind of stake in the ground saying that we will be, and I think it's such an example for the rest of the community.
Any other discussion? Counsel Acioni.
Thank you, through you, Warden. I really like this. I like the idea of making sure everybody can make enough to live. The only question I have to the deputy warden on just the wording of it, therefore be it resolved that staff return a report on feasibility and budget and tax implications of Oxford County becoming a living wage employer. Are you also considering all of the other municipalities in this? Or we just, is the intention just for Oxford County employees here at the county?
This, right now, is just Oxford County. Yeah. I encourage anybody who wants to bring that to their own council.
Yeah, this council has no ability to require the other municipalities to do anything.
Just, yeah, we can circle it. I just wanted to make sure that was the intention of this.
No, it would be up to every other municipality if they wanted to do this or not, or how, or when.
Perfect. Thank you.
I think Counsel Gilvezzi.
Yes, I have a question through you, Warden, about how many employees would this affect? Like, I'm assuming that we don't have any employees, full-time employees or adult employees under 1950, and that this might pertain to students. So I'm just seeking clarification.
Through the warden to Counsel Gilvezzi. That's exactly right. The vast majority of our positions earn above the living wage already. It's our seasonal student positions. And then one position within our library branches that also, for the majority employees, high school students or university students. So it will be a minimal impact. We have to do some research, obviously, on how students fall under kind of the living wage principles, but we can bring that back through the report.
So with the motion on the floor, I can make a comment, then?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for the answer to the question. So, number one, I think that there should be a significant difference between students versus regular employees. And I think we undertake market reviews for that reason, to make sure that we are paying a fair wage compared to employees around the area. Students aren't paying mortgages, like, to class seasonal students who are probably in school, the same as the rest of our staff who are paying mortgages and raising families, I think are two very different things. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Schaefer.
So if we're a living wage employer, what does that do for us? What does that provide us?
Are you looking for anybody in particular? Did I answer that, or? I mean, I will take a crack at it. I wrote this, and I want to thank the deputy warden for moving it and Counsel Mayberry for seconding it, putting it on the floor. I wrote this as a result of, in my position on the Board of Health, receiving the report that we did there on a living wage, and as a result of being the chair of the Safe and Well Oxford Plan, that, the steering committee, that it is repeatedly heard from multiple sources about people's ability to pay and afford, you know, rent and groceries are the two primary things that we hear all the time. And it seems to me that as a municipal employer who funds the Safe and Well Oxford Plan, who funds through a levy, Southwestern Public Health, that it would be only in our own interests of potentially lowering the costs of both of those things to actually pay people enough money that they, at least through their paycheck, would have the ability to look after themselves. And that I would hope that if we're not paying somebody enough to live on, then we should be paying them enough to live on. Notwithstanding the comments about a student, I'm assuming that would be sort of prorated for how many months they work, kind of thing. And frankly, if it means that we don't have anybody who doesn't earn the living wage now, then no big deal, but it would prevent us in the future from ever paying somebody who, a wage that is less than a living wage. That's my intention, and that's what I think gets us, is the potential to be consistent with our strategic plan initiatives and our obligations to Southwestern Public Health. Counsel Martin and Counsel Tate. Sorry, Counsel Tate and Counsel Martin.
Just through the chair, I think I heard pretty clear that we don't have any full-time staff or part-time that make, it's just seasonal students, so I'm not going to support the motion.
Counsel Martin.
To address Counsel Schaefer's question and what I think I heard the warden say, when we lift people out of poverty, we increase graduation rates, we increase literacy rates, we reduce the future burden on social services and the likelihood of people falling in future generations back into poverty, which then impacts not just our own tax levy, but the provincial and federal burdens to provide social services. So when we can be proactive, it saves us money later in being reactive and in paying for social services. So I fully support the motion. I would respectfully disagree that student wages are also a part of the equation of a living wage. Students pay rent, students pay tuition, students have financial bills. And when we look at Oxford County being competitive as a municipality, and I speak from experience of a 20-year-old that is out there looking for their next co-op job right now, if we are paying $18 and another municipality is paying $20 and another municipality is paying $23 for very similar jobs, a $2 swing per hour is $1,500 over the course of a term, which is two months' rent. So that, it does matter to students, not just to full-time, long-term employees. So those are my thoughts.
Counsel Peterson.
Yeah, if this goes through, I'm sure it will anyway, but if we can just have, I guess at the time when the report comes, what it's going to cost for both students and the other. I'm sure you would do that anyway if this passes through.
Anyone else? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Any inquiries of staff? Counsel Mayberry. Have you got that in writing to the clerk?
Yes.
And you will have, and I'm assuming you mean this as a notice of motion for the next meeting?
Yes.
Correct. And you will have a secondor at that time. Thank you. Any inquiries? Not seeing any. Closed session. Counsel Palmer.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Peterson. The council rise and The council rise and go into a closed session to consider report PWCS 2025-12 regarding a trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial, or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality. Oh, shit. Come on. Can I get a piece of paper? My computer just went. Where was I? Okay, which is disclosed could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group, of persons, or organization.
Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Opposed? That is carried. From closed, and next item is consideration of myers arising from the closed session. Counselor Acioni.
Thank you, Warren. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Warden Petrie. Resolve that the recommendations contained in report PWCS 2025-12 be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And bylaws, Counselor Gilvezzi.
Moved by myself and seconded by--
Wait, we're editing this.
There is an edited version because of the pecuniary interest. There's-- it's not all of them at once. Has Counselor Gilvezzi got that one?
I said, "made of the amended ones to everyone."
Yep. Okay, so Counselor Gilvezzi has the amended one, but there's-- we need a mover and a second for the other ones then that are-- Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Martin. Resolve that the following bylaws be read a first, second, and second time. 6707-2025, 6708-2025, 6711-2025, 6712-2025 to 6713-2025. Resolve that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading.
We have to vote, and then we can--
No, oh, yeah.
Oh, that's the next-- No.
Hold on. You just moved first and second for the first bunch.
Yes.
This is the first line. We're going to vote that.
Okay.
Um. You got all the ones you needed there? Yeah. Any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried.
Okay, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin. Resolve that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading. 6707-2025, 6708-2025, 6711-2025, 6712-2025 to 6713-25.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried.
No, she's leaving now.
Yeah.
Just going to put you on there.
Okay, Counselor Gilvezzi.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Schaefer. Resolve that bylaw number 6709-2025 be given a first and second reading.
And just--
So, this is not the one that our counselor has a conflict of interest on? This is the development charges bylaw?
Correct.
So, do you want me to go see if she would like to come back and participate?
Like, I mean, it's up to you and her. She's not required to be here for the vote, so it's neither here nor there. Um, you read it, right?
I read it.
Yeah. 6709-2025. All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Counselor Gilvezzi.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Schaefer. Resolve that bylaw number 6709-2025 be given a third and final reading.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Counselor Gilvezzi.
Okay, moved by my-- Yes. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Acioni. Resolve that bylaw number 6710-2025 be given a first and second reading.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried.
Resolved that by-- Oh, sorry, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Palmer. Resolve that bylaw number 6710-2025 be given a third and final reading.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Somebody give her a shout. I think we got them all there, right? By my count, we did. Uh, Counselor Peterson.
Okay, we still got 30 minutes. Do you want me to stall for a little bit, or?
I absolutely do not.
Moved by Peterson, seconded by Counselor Petrie. Resolve that council-- that the council meeting of February 26, 2025 be adjourned until the next meeting scheduled for March 12, 2025 at 9:30.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And we are--